If we can stand for the invocation. Mr. Jones.
Power heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Guide us and direct us in all, in all of the decisions that we make. And when we leave here this evening, may we take your love and companionship with us. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge is allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Institute of Republic, where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you all. Okay, could I have a motion for certification of the closed session, please?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci is absent. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? I need you to unmute him. Councilmember Moss? Sorry. Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Nine to zero. You've certified the closed session and made a call with a motion to recess.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the joint special, special session of September 8, 2020?
Mayor, could you, I'm sorry, could you do all of them?
All of them, okay.
Probably a little easier.
Okay, and then number two, also approve the minutes from the informal and formal session of September 15, 2020, to special session of September 22, 2020, and the special session of October 13, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk? Yes?
The, the one with Westminster Canterbury, I wasn't in attendance on that. Which one, what date was that? That was the 22nd?
September 22.
Yeah, so I'll be abstaining on that one.
And me too, I was in the afternoon, but left for the evening.
Vice Mayor, you were in court on October 13 as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I also abstain on the Westminster Canterbury.
As do I.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm abstaining on the 22nd, and then I was in federal court on the 13th, so numbers three and four, I'll be abstaining on.
Okay, can we call the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye, but I'm abstaining on, yes, 22nd. Thank you. Councilmember Lucci is absent. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye, with the abstention of the evening of the Westminster vote.
Yes. Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Yes. Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By vote, attended zero. You have approved the minutes as submitted, noting the abstentions of Vice Mayor Wood, Councilmembers Wilson, Jones, and Abbott.
Okay, at this point, we have a very special presentation. Is Erin Sutton in the room? Welcome.
Thank you.
A very special day for our city. A resolution. Whereas Erin Sutton has served the city since 2014, and, and recently as the director, director of the newly established Office of Emergency Management. She established the Virginia Beach Incident Management Team, composed of emergency management, management professionals across the city. And whereas, as Director of the Office of Emergency Management, the establishment, as she, the, she established the foundation of emergency preparedness in the city by developing the city's emergency operations plans with best practices, creating public awareness programs for hurricanes and severe weather, building partnerships in the region, and coordinating numerous training and exercises. And whereas, she led the city's response to recovery through numerous disasters and incidents, including but not limited to the coronavirus pandemic, May 31, 31 mass shooting, ocean jet fuel spell, and Hurricane Matthew. And whereas, she also served the city as the Environmental Health Manager, Emergency Planner, and Medical Reserve Corps Director for the Department of Public Health. And whereas, she served as the Planning Section Chief on the Hampton Roads Incident Management Team, and deployed to several planned events and disasters across the Commonwealth. And whereas, she has completed numerous certifications and trainings, including Master Exercise Practitioner, Certified Flood Plane Manager, and Certified Emergency Manager. And whereas, her work was recognized by the VEMA Emergency Management Professional of the Year Award in 2020. And whereas, her dedication to continued education and training on emergency preparedness practices has helped the city immensely. Whereas, under Erin's leadership, the city's emergency preparedness has developed and improved, and her work will continue to advance and benefit the city. And whereas, on this day, we honor a public servant who has led the city through some of its most challenging times, and prepared the city to effectively face and recover from any disaster that we may encounter. Therefore, be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Erin Sutton for her outstanding contributions to our city, and extends its congratulations on her next chapter in her career, given on our hands this 20th day of November, 2020, and this is signed by the entire city council. Thank you. God bless you for everything you have done.
Terry, there's people still trying to sign in.
A very well-deserved award to somebody who has been magnificent in the time of crisis and service. Thank you, but that defines Virginia Beach strong. Okay, at this point, public comment. Number one, the allocation of the Edward Byrne Institute Justice Assistance Grant.
First speaker, only speaker is Barbara Messner. She's declining to speak on F1.
Okay, no other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, now move on to the 2021 legislative agenda.
The first speaker is Bill Thomas. And after Mr. Thomas will be Mark Swingle.
Bill Tom?
Bill Thomas? Mr. Thomas, greetings.
Greetings to you, Mr. Mayor, and city council people, and all the good citizens of Virginia Beach. It's been a pleasure for me to have, to come before you this wonderful evening, Octobers, and to thank you for the consideration that we have been blessed with. I'm here for a very simple reason. My mom died of respiratory cancer. My dad died of prostate cancer. My sisters had breast cancer. Cancer, the most cruellest feared word across the globe, is taking lives from everyone. From congressmen to senators to everyday citizens. And what we've asked the city to do, and you've been gracious with us before, Hampton University has been a partner with the city of Virginia Beach. We have invested money in their city, in hotels, in venues. And I was just so taken back by a young lady who heard us talk about an issue at a press conference where we thought we had been treated unfairly by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And all we've always asked is for fairness. Dr. Harvey Leadership has brought a wonderful, wonderful product, service, innovative technology, precision medicine, to Hampton Roads area. We have saved over 3,500 lives. As you may or may not know, with COVID-19, the underlying precondition of COVID-19, even though those direct deaths from COVID-19 are small, underlying diseases like cancer and others cause us this madness to continue until we find a solution. And that's what we're here doing today. I have a student here who is a Virginia Beach citizen at Hampton University School of Nursing, and she just expresses the word of Martin Luther King, who said, "Of all forms of inequality, injustice itself is the most shocking and most inhumane." African Americans, a black man like me, and you guys sitting up there, are two and a half times more likely to die from prostate cancer than a white man. Even though white women have a lower diagnostics of breast cancer, black women are one and a half times more likely to die. Prostate cancer is a curse in our community. A curse. The city of Portsmouth leads the Commonwealth in cancer death. And when the paper wrote about it, it didn't say it because they have some precondition to it. It had it because they didn't have access to it. I'm so proud of Dr. Harvey, who went out on his own and raised $225 million, a quarter of a billion dollars, without any help from the federal government, state government, or anyone. He did it on our own. He did it as a vision because he saw this illness as something that was going to be a perpetual stain and brew upon our character. And all we're asking, and I want to thank Ms. Wooton, because I have a simple, simple lesson in life. I haven't met her personally. We support no friends, no enemies, only interests. What's good for our well-being, what's good for our children? And instead of throwing rocks or yelling and screaming at each other, this young lady reached out to us, and we'll be forever grateful. The Virginia General Assembly just turned us down again on our request. And your help will help us get to the point that we get to, so that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you, and your valuable service, and I know a lot of people in Virginia Beach go across the pond to use it, so thank you. I've referred to folks who myself.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and be safe.
The next speaker is Mark Swingle. Mr. Swingle, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, he's going to participate virtual.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Please begin your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. Swingle, please begin your comments. We can hear you.
Hello, can you, can you hear me? Hello? Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
We'll come back. The next speaker is Ada McPherson.
Ms. McPherson, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, Mayor. To the Honorable Mayor, to the members of city council, to the esteemed citizens of Virginia Beach. I also want to speak just briefly in support of the request by Hampton University for the city of Virginia Beach to support their efforts for funding. But I want to approach it from a slightly different standpoint. As many of you know, I was the former Director of the Department of Minority Business Enterprise for the Commonwealth of Virginia, under two governors, McDonald and McCullough. And one of the focuses was to look at what we could do to improve businesses in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And in that regard, especially for those that were most lacking in terms of opportunity, which was the women and minority-owned businesses. Hampton University is the only SWAM certified historical black college and university in the state of Virginia. It was a result of special legislation across bipartisan lines. So what I'd like to say is that though the city of Virginia Beach did a disparity study in 2019, $57 million went to women and minorities, but you got to look a little lord in that. The minority population only got $27 million of that, only 5.5%. And obviously, we appreciate all of the efforts in that regard, but when you have an institution of this size, a university, and it requests for funding and supporting the programs that they offer, especially their small business center that they have anchored here in Town Center, that we look at ways that we can support those efforts. So I would call upon the city of Virginia Beach to do everything it can, be progressive, be bold, take bold leadership, and talk about ways that you can increase your spend with minority-owned businesses, such as the university. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The only other speaker is Mark Swingle. Mr. Swingle, if you'll pause two to three seconds, begin your comments. We can hear you, but we can't communicate back and forth with you. So if you'll begin your comments, pausing two to three seconds. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, thank you, city council members, mayor. I appreciate the time this evening. I just wanted to make a few comments about the, the balloon legislation that's been included on the city's legislative agenda. Balloons are a significant coastal litter problem. A four-year scientific study that we participated in at the Virginia Aquarium of marine debris on the state's coastal beaches found that balloons and balloon debris were the most common item recorded on half of the beaches that were surveyed. More than 150 balloons and balloon parts per mile were recorded on uninhabited barrier islands. So there's no one living on these islands, yet balloons are the most common item found on many of these beaches. Balloons have been observed from North Carolina, Maryland, West Virginia, and even Kansas on Virginia beaches. This goes to show what an insidious problem balloon litter can be. Balloon litter injures and kills wildlife. At the aquarium, at the aquarium's nationally-known stranding response program, we see the impacts of balloons on sea turtles and marine mammals that strand all the time. Current Virginia law allows any individual to release up to 49 balloons per hour. The time has come to change Virginia's law to ban intentional outdoor balloon releases and, and to end this further littering and environmental damage that is done from balloons. I'm not going to speak very long about this. I have, certainly have a lot more information I could share, but I just wanted to thank the city of Virginia Beach and the city council for supporting this initiative in the upcoming general assembly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
At this point, we'll move on to public hearings. Number one is the acquisition of agricultural lands preservation, ARP easement, 58.22 acres at the 1200 block of Princess Anne Road.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Most of y'all are aware, even though none of you replied to my, I don't even know where the camera is today, that the, the full agenda was not published Friday morning, it wasn't published Saturday, and there was no due process for this meeting. And we should be in the large two ballrooms. It's ridiculous, this many things on one agenda. This one is acquisition of agricultural land for ARP easement, 58 acres. I oppose acquisition of any of their rare land because you just voted on a convention, convention center out on agricultural land, even though most of the residents there didn't want it. Like I said, these meetings, they're not proper, there's not enough notice. And I want to ask those who have conflicts with these projects, these are the outside law firms. We have at least one attorney here with a conflict, and the person that... Okay, you know, as far as notices, this is, this is a short-term rental sign for September that was posted this week. That is not due notice. Okay, I'm talking about due process and how I feel about the land.
With due respect, we're talking about the land on Princess Anne Road.
Right, and I'm saying that everyone isn't aware, and I'm showing examples. This is, I've already sent this to y'all, you should be aware. This is the sign in the sidewalk. You let the developer put the signs out, not... And this, you cannot read. If they'll zoom in, you cannot read that, and it's turned backwards. It's in the sidewalk, almost on the street. And... Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, next is the proposed cafe franchise agreement for Thirsty 24 LLC at Atlantic Pints at 2314 Atlantic Avenue.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
If I'm the only speaker, this is wet, so I don't strike the time until I can, I don't want my stuff to get wet. Okay. This one is cafe agreement. Thirsty 24 LLC, another brewery. They're all taxpayer subsidized, city and state. The brewery industry, the alcohol industry, funds a lot of these people, including their governor. I am tired of air money, your priorities. Stop corporate welfare. Abolish the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority. It's only debt. We pay for their rent. We pay their salaries at Town Center. We built five parking garages for them. All the parking garages, as everyone knows in this area, is not for the locals, it's for the staff and the hotel industry. You should not be selling monthly passes to people. Abolish Economic Development Authority. Relocate the king of nepotism to the bottom of the sea. I listened to a little bit of your praise about how much you're spending. 30, 30 million of the CARES Act will be going to pay salaries that y'all should have been able to take care of. And you, millions, I think 10 million advertising the beach. The beach has never been closed. The beach has never been closed. The only person we know of on city council, we all have to wear masks. The only person that we know of that has supposedly taken a test is Mr. Moss, and he's been around all of y'all. So I think we should know who else is taking the test. And I, I oppose the franchises because it also, you're taking over sidewalks, you're taking over the, the grassy knolls at the oceanfront, you're allowing them to build out permanent structures. Everything is for the alcohol industry and tourism industry, and you should spend a tenth of the time taking care of the residents. We are the stakeholders, not the developers who pay for your elections. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
All right, moving on to item number three. Use of city parking, property parking use agreements at Lynn Haven Municipal Marina with Chicks Marina Properties LLC. 13 spaces between 4:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., and 24 spaces between 4:00 p.m. and 4:00 a.m. Any speakers?
The first speaker is Carl Eason. After Mr. Eason will be Gary Bradford.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the applicant in support of this. I appreciate staff and city council and the attorney working with us on this. We've limited the spaces to two designated areas, tried to reach accommodation for the slip owners, and I'm here to answer any questions. I know you're fully briefed on the project and aware of its details. Ask your support.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gary Bradford. And after Mr. Bradford will be Todd Solomon. Gary Bradford. Then the next speaker is Todd Solomon.
Okay, Todd, it's Todd, okay, there he is. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, city council members. I'm here to speak on behalf in favor of this lease agreement. I understood a couple of things that have come up, so I'll add that into it as far as potential opposition. But as far as agreement goes, it's nice to see that you're actually taking a lease of city property and making some, some funding on it, some revenue on it. Unfortunately, with the Litton Boat Ramp and the parking spots there, and giving it to Orsted, you did nothing and lost about $50,000 a year possible revenue from that. But at least on this one, you're gaining about $15,000 a year revenue, which is nice. I'd also like to say thank you to Rick Rowe and Parks and Rec for doing a great job of civic engagement on this. We know, we've had issues with civic engagement with Westminster Canterbury. There's no civic engagement. With short-term rental, there's no civic engagement. So it was nice to see Rick Rowe and Parks and Recs doing a lot of civic engagement, keeping us up to speed on it, giving us information, giving us documents, answering questions. So we appreciate that tremendously. Again, we think that you should take this, and when Orsted's lease comes up, you know, add some additional parking that you took away, the 70 boat spots there, the slips there, or the parking spots there, and charge Orsted some money, and continue making some profit on city property, which would be nice. My understanding here is you're potentially taking away some parking spots from people that are already paid for actual parking spots at this marina, so maybe somehow you can give them reimbursement for it. If they only, if they were paid for four spots and you took two away, then maybe reimburse 50% of the property or the spots that you're taking. So, but again, we think it's a great idea. It's a good public engagement, civic engagement. We think maybe Rick Rowe, if he could be a mentor to you for other civic engagement things, you know, some of you may need some help with civic engagement, so that would be great. Talk to Rick as far as better processes. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Wills? Mike Wills is the next speaker.
Good evening.
And after Mr. Wills is Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, city council members. I've been a partner in a lease there at the city marina for the last four or five years, and just wanted to say that I am not totally against this. I am encouraged to hear that the city is going to be gaining some revenue from it, as Todd just mentioned there. So, but there's, the last couple of years, not, this year hadn't been a problem because of the COVID situation, but the last couple of summers, you know, it's been, the parking's been really, you know, crowded there. A lot of Chicks employees taking over the spots, you know, adjacent to the slips. And each of us as slipholders get four parking permits, and we'd be hard pressed to find two there, you know, on the busy summer days. So I'm, I'm... So I'm encouraged that, you know, you've limited to the thirteen that are furthest away from the slips and gaining some revenue from that. But I'd ask that we make sure we, you know, really enforce that, because it's not much fun when you got a lug course full of ice and your fishing gear and all that from, you know, multiple spots down from where your slip is. And as far as the revenue goes, I'd like to ask if this goes forward and is approved, that it be reinvested into the marina. We've lost a lot of amenities there in terms of like restroom facilities. We've been using a porta potty for four or five years now. So I think the law enforcement officials that use the facility would also appreciate that if we get some proper showers and restroom facilities there, maybe another fish cleaning station. There's a lot of charters that operate out of there, and a lot of times the fish cleaning station, the single one we have there is pretty backed up. So maybe we could reinvest, like I said, into facilities. And so the slip, slip leaseholders get a little something back for the premium that we pay for those spots each month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Joe DeZormo.
Good evening. I was here when this was brought up before, and you had a lot more people here opposing. People cannot, especially with the COVID and the restrictions and the lack of advertising and notifications, um, they can't keep coming back and jump through all the hoops. Parking is one of the biggest scams in the city of Virginia Beach. That's why I got involved with the Thirty-First Street Hotel. We paid for that parking garage. And there's no parking in the Ninth Street parking garage, Thirty-First, you're taking away parking from the convention center. There were over two thousand spots where people could park their bikes and, um, park their cars and ride their bikes to the beach. Taking away everything for the locals. And you should have had park and ride shuttles for everyone. We shouldn't be having parking problems. You're building on every piece of land in the city. You took away an entire square mile of land for the arena, which is now the Sports Center, which you've already booked. Air kids should have the track and field at their schools. We shouldn't have it just for, uh, for filling hotel rooms, which you admit, anybody who listens to the meetings, everything you do is to fill hotel rooms and to get revenue. The Institute for Justice, IGA.org, they've listed Virginia Beach, or the state of Virginia, a derating for policing for profit. Peoples are having their cars towed everywhere. When you go down there, like Nineteenth Street, um, if you, if you pull up, it says how many parking spaces. You pay for all these LED lights to say how many parking spaces. But it's gated most of the time. The same thing for Rudy Inlet. You know, we don't need something in the water, that is not how you get revenue and fill hotel rooms. And you don't reward thirty years of bad behavior, paying millions of dollars. I would be ashamed to have the, to get all excited about all the money that you're finding here and there, but it doesn't go to the people that need it. And I oppose, um, you know, this, this project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe DeZormo. And then after Mr. DeZormo will be Chris Ludford.
Welcome.
Thank you, council, mayor. I wanted, I've been, my name is Joe DeZormo. I've been in the marina for over thirty years, and I'm never late with my payments or anything. And I resent you leasing our parking spots on the other end of the marina to chicks. When I have guests, I don't let them park around my boat because other people have boats there and the slips are real tight. You know, but for the parking spots, forty slips, so I have my guests parked down at the end. So I usually have three or four cars that park down there using my passes. And it's just, I don't think it's right. And the other gentleman said something about our bathroom facilities. We haven't had a porta potty on the, on the big boat side of the marina in years. Had to use our boats and then have to take our boats out and go somewhere and have it pumped out because in the past, we haven't even had a pump-out facility. And I just think you're really doing wrong, you're treating us wrong. Have you, if you want to see an example of what will happen if you don't tighten up a little bit with chicks, go down to Long Bay Point on a weekend. If you're going fishing out of Long Bay Point, I dare you to try to find a parking spot. They don't have them. It's really a shame. So anyway, I'm just telling you, I'm against it. I think you're really doing us an injustice. And we, most of us have been in there a long time, and it's a long waiting list to get in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Chris Ludford.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for letting me speak. Back again before you on this topic, just to give a little detail on Captain DeZormo's comment about Long Bay Point. It's interesting that the restaurant there that's using all the parking is owned by the same owners. You can ask their council, he's here. I wish I could afford to have a lawyer here and speak for me and on behalf of the rest of the tenants, but I can't afford that, neither can the tenants. But the bottom line is, we've already paid for those slips. You're going to resell them or re-lease them again. That was brought up the last time. The lease I noticed this time was, was adjusted, language just changed in that to help allow for this to happen. That's unfair. That's something y'all don't know. I've been in the slip for twenty years, and the lease has changed significantly in the last year to allow this to happen, in my opinion. Okay? I don't know why else it would be changed. We have not had restrooms or showers. Our rates are on comparable facilities with those amenities, and we don't have them. Meanwhile, and we didn't even get a new bulkhead until, I don't know what agreement was made, but chicks protested the new bulkhead on city property until something was done to appease them. Meanwhile, they constructed a two-story facility, a new banquet hall or some other attraction. They have restroom facilities. We don't have restroom facilities. Maybe they will let us use theirs, I don't know. But, you know, we're not asking to use theirs, they're asking to use our spaces. City-owned, that's, that marina gets us a lot of dredging. Many of you don't know that, but federal dollars, because that is a commercial marina, by code, by statute, ask your city employees to look this up for you, that city marina has to have commercial slips. Because of that, the Army Corps of Engineers dredges Lynn Haven Inlet. Rudy, we pay for because it was man-made and it was something the city took on. Lynn Haven gets federal dollars for dredging because of the city marina. Now, on top of that, and I'm a commercial user, charter captain, oyster business, we talked about that last time, now I'm asked to share or give up what was mine. And I paid for it as a leaseholder, just like Captain DeZormo. I don't think that making a profit off of this, and I think that the, the, the consistency is not there across the board. There are certain places where the partnerships create a profit, it's just not consistent. So I wanted to bring that point up as well. In closing, I would just like to ask, you know, that you think about the fairness of this, and also understand that right now, neither of us are competing for parking because it is off-season. But in the summer, and we said this last time, we need the spaces at the same time. We've been there for forty years. Chicks has expanded over the last fifteen, allowed to expand, allowed to expand without parking. Would Dimitri Hionis or Kevin Selden at Dockside, or the families that own, partner with him on Dockside, do they get any, any treatment or any offer? Were they allowed to bid on this? They're walking distance. Perhaps we should have had that come up. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Beverly Ludford. Beverly Ludford will be participating via WebEx. Ms. Ludford, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm opposed to this lease as a slipholder. I spoke to the city manager, council members, and city staff two years ago, met with them about the problems that we had with chicks parking. I had pictures, dates, and times showing the overcrowding, the increased property theft from the boats, the litter, and the damage. Two weeks ago, on October the sixth, when we were supposed to discuss this, at six AM, there were ten vehicles that had been there overnight, left overnight, presumably because the guests were not able to drive them. Not being able to park near the boat is a burden for me by carrying coolers and equipment and so forth. I have pictures of parking for chicks' customers all along where the boat slips are. And while their cars are valet parked in spaces by the boats, we have to find parking somewhere away from our boats. The spaces are already leased to the slipholders, as you've heard, and with COVID-19, we're full and busy at the marina because people are going out in the boats more than they have in the past. We're still waiting for restrooms and potable water, both required by state health regulations. I question the city leasing parking in such a way with no advertisement, no competition, and no concern for the Public Procurement Act and spaces that are not really available. Thank you for listening.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move on to the lease of city property at A. One-one-one-three Atlantic Avenue, DeWitt Cottage, and B. Nine-twelve Princess Anne Road to the Senior Resource Center Incorporated.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening. Speaking of the, of the due process, if people are noticing, you're letting people speak, but you're not voting on each item. Then you're putting it back on consent agenda and, and voting, um, which is not how the city used to be run. We should see everyone's vote at the same time, and they shouldn't just abstain. But, um, this is for tourism, again, DeWitt Cottage. It used to be a cute little cottage, but now it's, um, you know, you're trying to turn it into another brewery. Nine-twelve Princess Anne Road, Senior Resource Center. Yeah, the city should not be leasing property. There isn't enough land in the city, and you decide who gets it and who doesn't. It should be, uh, it should be for everyone. And as far as, I haven't seen anyone abstain, but I think it's important, some people do go to, you know, look at the candidates when they run. But this is just, um, these are the outside law firms that we've been paying on top, like four hundred to six hundred an hour. I don't even know what we're paying for the Holloway case, outside law firms. Kaufman and Canoles, we have someone here that should be abstaining because we've been paying them for twenty years. And their stock and their shareholder status, um, you know, it affects how they vote and how it benefits them personally. Okay, Troutman Sanders, which I think is now Troutman Peters, I noticed that.
Mr. Wood would like to say something, please?
I'm not, I don't want to say something, but this, this is only specific thing, the Atlantic Law Company.
Okay, we've already gone over this, Mr. Wood. This is my time, I came here, the meeting shouldn't even be taking place, and it's, it's not your interpretation, my free speech. I would like my full three minutes to list these names, and one of them happens to be Wilcox Savage, where your son works.
Okay.
Free speech is very important.
That's all the speakers, sir.
We're gonna move on, but I, you know, I think I want to read the script, you know, speaker policy first, so we have an understanding as we get into the planning items. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time. You are called. When the speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items where only one speaker has signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have called up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints are, persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, Mr. Wood, I think we're ready for the consent agenda? Oh, we gotta bring up the speakers? Okay.
We have, for orders and resolutions, Ms. Messner signed up on every item. So the first item will be item number two.
Yes.
Ms. Messner?
Is that, one is?
Uh, the first item is pulled, so this, the item will be number two.
All right.
It's the first item. Thank you.
And as stated, it's pretty hard to get ready for a meeting when we don't have the full agenda, which can be anywhere, like I think this one's two-hundred-and-fifty-three pages, just, um... So most of this I can do off the top of my head because I know what y'all do, but it would be nice to have the, uh, the full information. You want to move the November third regular meeting of city council to November tenth. Okay, um... We have too many meetings, you have special sessions. You went into another closed session today, you go into closed sessions every meeting. So you want to move November third, um, that was already canceled, if I'm not mistaken, because it's election day, but you didn't, um, you didn't make any effort to reschedule at that time. And I want to bring up the, the planning meeting, um, which is November fourth, the day after, um, the day after election. That's, you know, most people won't be able to go, and the elections probably won't even be over. So I just, um, I think if it's canceled, it should stay canceled, and you should have at least six months or thirty days, whatever, to reschedule. So I'm in opposition.
The next item is number three, regarding the location of city council meetings.
Okay, um, okay. Relocation of city council meetings. I wish somebody would offer exactly where that is because I already saw, you know, because you were moving the meetings back to council chambers, like on the fifteenth, and people were turned away, and you weren't meeting the mandate as far as mask, um, you had to move it back, but people had to leave that meeting. You made us all wait downstairs until five minutes to six, and then most of staff went up there to take up the seats and people left. I've lobbied for the council meetings to be at the convention center, but in the two ballrooms, not in this place. You have no idea whether you're going to jump on or off the pandemic. But we do need a clean, safe building with parking. So if it's at the convention... So if it's at the convention center, that's fine. But it should be in the two ballrooms because the spacing is, is difficult, okay?
The next item is number four, to re-adopt the Virginia Beach Emergency Operations Plan.
All of this, reallocate, amend, waiver, re-adopt. Mr. Mayor, can you ask people not to talk in the back of the room? Can you try to get?
Folks, if we, if you can kindly, you know, curtail conversations and respect the speaker, thank you.
I think we've had a problem with preparing emergency plans. I don't know how many people noticed, but before the mass shooting, you had a mock mass casualty, it was part of something in the water with Centerra. I, I don't agree that you've done a great job with public safety and, it's not directed at the public safety staff, it's directed at, at council and the people that they put in charge, okay?
The next item is number five, regarding the general obligation refunding bond series 2020.
Okay, and it's very difficult to be the only person here. You know, people are running and they don't even come here to speak. How do we know what, how they really care about, feel about any of these things? Resolution to authorize the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bond in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed. They're still talking, Mr. Dyer, can they be asked to leave? If they, if they want to talk and have a conversation while people are speaking? Okay, amount not to exceed $3,445,000 and execution and delivery of certain documents prepared in connect, in connection where, with the, in. Okay, we're taking out more bonds, more debt, $3,445,000. I oppose, we have a budget. COVID should not have that much of a role in the budget. You've been given a fortune that comes from the federal government to the state, and northern gives it to you, and you select who gets it. I don't think some alcohol establishments are more important than opening their schools and their playgrounds. Okay, number six?
Next item is number six, to designate the city as a B-City USA affiliate.
B-City. You have so many partnerships and advertising and marketing. I've lived here a long time. It wasn't until you started having problems with crime and people weren't coming back for repeat that you started helping the hotels advertise. The hotels are private industry, we should not entertain for them, and we should not subsidize them and spend literally billions over the years on marketing. One of your, y'all were all jumping for glee at, you know, how we're balancing the budget. We're balancing it on the backs of the mass shooting victims, that money's come in and been misused, and on the COVID. And I, I do FOIA, so I do know where the money goes and where it hasn't gone. Okay, number seven?
Yes, ma'am, number seven.
Okay, ordinance to establish new CIP, Capital Improvement Projects, for 2021. We used to have bids, but now the city is the developer and has partners. from Capital Project Traffic Safety Improvements. Why wouldn't we want to keep the money in traffic safety improvements? You say we're the safest city? I mean, all you have to do is look at the news. People are killed and hit by cars all the time. We're not the safest city, and the FBI crime stats, I think 2019 Neighborhood Scout, we have a very low rating, if somebody wants to look that up. Okay, the new projects, Independence Boulevard pedestrian improvements, that, that would be nice. But it should come out of the regular budget, and it should have been done a long time ago. People, people beg and plead every time somebody gets killed at a dangerous intersection. We should have crossovers. You have them for the 31st Street Hotel, you have it for the 9th Street. You know, you have all this valet parking for 31st Street Hotel and now for the Cavalier. Okay, Parliament Drive sidewalk phase one. You advertised a sidewalk in the Red Wing area that was never built. And, you know, we still don't have another exit out of Red Wing. You closed the main one that was a requirement when the place was built. Getting out on Oceana Boulevard, they're still talking, Mr. Dyer. I wish you could reread parliamentary procedure and be as nice to me as you are to the developers and the stakeholders. Okay, and then Sandbridge Road sidewalk. I don't even know where there'd be room for a sidewalk in Sandbridge, it's not even room for parking. Yeah, we have at least $3 billion debt, and you're using COVID and other money and you're partnering, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
The next item is eight.
Eight.
Regarding the resort area outdoor cafe.
I got it, thanks, thanks. I have it right here, I did make a copy, thank you. Adopt revised regulations, resort, outdoor cafe franchise. I've opposed these for a long time. We have a state law against serving and consuming alcohol in public. These cafes are expansions of indoor restaurants that sell alcohol. Alcohol should not be on the sidewalks. And you're, you know, since COVID, you selectively allow people to put tents there, even in the parking lot, it, where the Heritage Store is. There's not a sidewalk there, it's all these tacky, you know, sidewalk cafes. This isn't Italy. Sorry. Anyway, I'm glad somebody thinks something's funny. But if they knew that we've spent over $4 million for the, for the breweries, and then, like New Realm, which was Green Flash, spent $100,000 just to lure Green Flash from, from California, and now it's New Realm. These are industrial manufacturing and distribution. It's in our grocery stores, Target. We shouldn't be making money on alcohol, and we shouldn't be having it on every corner in Sensations and all these other places. So I, I oppose the cafe and everything you're doing. I looked at some of the, the diagrams when you had your workshop. And there's no place to walk, there's no place to sit on the grassy knoll. We used to have a safe beach, you could, you could be out on your balcony and hear somebody in trouble in the water. Before you expanded the beach, we could hear somebody ask, screaming for help. The expanded beach is just tacky, brown, filthy venue. We should have built a centrally located arena, like Hampton Coliseum, you know, instead of the second or third convention center. Okay, nine? Okay. Grant a franchise agreement for an open-air cafe in the resort area, Thirsty 24 LLC, Atlantic Avenue sidewalk. That's another brewery, two locations. And they've been open during the pandemic. If you look at the national news, some of the places where people get sick are where, when they're drinking, and they aren't thinking as clearly. So a lot of the problems for the new rise has been from people in restaurants. Open-air cafe that was started with, I won't say the person's name, they ran for city treasurer, but Crocs, that started out as just a farmer's market. And there's been a lot of crime associated with that. And we do not need to pay children to do diversity things all over the vibe district. That's what started the vibe district. Open-air is just an excuse to have an event. Ten?
Yes, ma'am, ten, A, B, and C.
Okay. Acquisition, acquire agricultural land, ARP, easement from Holly Road LLC and Ole Hill Kruger, 58.22 acres. I wish I did have the full agenda because Holly Road, if that's the one across from the Shell Station, it's already being built, and there is no, okay. Like I said, I have no way of knowing without the agenda. It should be mailed to everyone since the libraries aren't open, council isn't available, and it isn't posted online on time. So wherever it is, 58.22 acres, you know, a lot of this agricultural reserve program, they're, they're changing it now to, to housing and, you know, all types of things. So I don't think we, the city should be acquiring land for anything. Issuance B, by the city of its contract obligation in the maximum principal amount of 681,174. And C, transfer funds to purchase US Treasury strips. So I'm used to bonds and refunding bonds and all that, but strips I assume is some type of debt. Either way, we have a budget, you should stick to the budget. And all this stuff in the middle of a pandemic, and you have open mic on top of it, is, is crazy. Okay, 11, authorize the city manager, good evening, Mr. Duhany, to execute a lease of city-owned property for up to five years with Bag Bay Wildlife Guild at 1113 Atlantic Avenue, DeWitt Cottage. Okay, I don't think anyone should have a lease with the city for up to five years. And this brings up the arena and 31st Street. The leases are usually a dollar a year. We're not making money, a dollar a year, and this is for tourism. So I oppose. Okay, 12, authorize the new city manager to execute a building lease and cooperative agreement for up to five years with Senior Resource Center, Inc., 912 Princess Anne Road, and to provide support and service to senior citizens residing in the southern part of the city. We have Human Resources Department and Social Service, and the city should have taken care of these people decades ago. Using COVID money for another Centerra project. I oppose everything you're doing and the lack of sunlight. Okay, 13?
Ma'am, 13 is to, is gonna be, is on consent for deferral to December the 8th, 2020.
Number 14.
No, she may still speak.
Right.
Let her know.
Okay. Authorize acquisition of property in fee simple, Princess Anne Plaza, North London Bridge Creek Pump Station, and CIP, and the acquisition temporary and permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation. Okay. If we did not have uncontrolled growth and failure to take care of the infrastructure for 30 to 50 years, you wouldn't be needing these pump stations. This stuff should have been taken care of a long time ago. You should budget properly, and you shouldn't be using air money for any private developer or entertainment, that's not the number one priority. Okay, 14? Okay. Authorize temporary encroachment into the portion of city-owned property, Treasure Canal in Bay Island, adjacent to Spinnaker Circle, for a boat lift. Yeah, I just think people who have their property should not be able to have temporary encroachments. So I'm in opposition. Okay, 15?
And that's to be deferred indefinitely.
Okay. Another temporary encroachment, City Right-of-Way, Old Dam Neck Road, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll skip that one for the sake of these other people, but a lot of people aren't here because there's other events going on, and they did not know. Or they're just tired of coming and being ignored. 16, reserve fund balance within the general fund for the pandemic financial relief and assistance, and appropriate 10 million in grants to the United Way, H-E-L-L, no. You don't, you don't make deals with private. We can, if we wanna support United Way, we'll do it. If we wanna support Salvation Army or whatever. But the city should not be. Okay, 10 million in grants, you know, haven't you ever heard of a loan? I mean, we shouldn't be funding, and Mr. Moss agreed at one point, he's not here, and I don't hear him speaking, you know, that we shouldn't be helping any nonprofit. It's air money, it's not your money, it's air money. But United Way, I've done FOIAs on that, and one of the candidates, I won't say which one, but most people will know, their, their candidate page, I think it was last November before it even filed, was a picture of the fundraiser for United Way, and there were two buttons, one for the candidate and one for United Way. Now, we still don't even have a memorial. You're more concerned about, you know, finding money, you know, to move people all around the city. Okay, 8 million EMS, 2 million emergency assistant and res, okay, and nonprofit volunteer rescue squad. We pay twice. We fund them, and we pay our taxes for public safety, and then you wanna take out more money. So I just don't think you're good stewards of air money. And I appreciate the fact that I still have an opportunity to speak out. After this next election, we may not have that opportunity. After this next election, we may not have that opportunity. Ordinance to appropriate, 17, 2.4 million fund balance in the general fund and 831,851 of fund balance in the Waste Management Enterprise Fund, repurchase, replacement vehicles and equipment. Okay? 2.4 million, this 2.4 million loan that you gave to Vanguard Landing. They never built anything, they just have fundraisers there. Why is the city, you know, taking out loans for them? This one, you're just, you're taking money we don't have, we have $3 billion debt. I don't like the way, you know, the, okay, I'll move on for the sake of these, the people waiting on planning items, because most of them come for one item, they don't read the whole agenda. Okay?
Ma'am, so 18A is not on consent. May I tell you what is going to be on consent and what, so what you should speak on now, please?
Okay.
Thank you. So it'll be 18, so 18A has two speakers, Carrie? 18G, 18I, and 18J.
What are you saying about 18A?
Ma'am, the ones for on consent are 18G, I, and J. Not A. Not A.
So which ones am I speaking on? Or am I going to wait?
18G, I, and J.
G, I, and J. 39,258,497 from United States Department of Treasury CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund, Grant Fund, reimbursable expenses, almost $40 million. You know, that's not filtering down to, to the residents who've lost jobs and, you know, they've lost their businesses. This is, you're just paying your own bills. So I object to how you're handling the money. Okay? I, 836,401 from FEMA, Emergency Management Operating Budget, Regional Housing Plan Project. The city should not be in housing, this should be private enterprise. Most of these mixed use use HUD money, that's federal money. And the FEMA money that was supposed to come to help Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, et cetera, that, that's been used at the oceanfront. So I'm in, opposed to how you're shifting money around for what's convenient for you when these things should have been taken care of a long time ago. Okay, J, 2 million, nearly 3 million, 2,941,791 from HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and federal funding and program income to the 2021 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Operating Budget. Ray, adjustments, Mr. Dyer, can you please say something to the people speaking? Okay. Okay. I'm taking the time, I, you don't do that to everyone. Adjustments in Community Development Block Grant Housing Choice Voucher and Home Programs. We never voted for you to have a housing authority, this is basically a housing authority, and you select which neighborhoods you think are, should have it, and I oppose. Okay?
19, A, B, and C.
The security in the back of it, just if they can hold, just hold it down in the back, I would appreciate it.
Okay, transfer, ordinance to transfer, 180,000 within Waste Management Enterprise Fund and authorize seven and a half temporary, can you just ask him to leave, have them leave? It's not working. I really don't appreciate trying to speak and taking this time and having people talk that loud. Okay, I'm going to repeat it. 180,000 within the Waste Management Enterprise Fund and authorize seven and a half, a half a person, temporary, part-time positions, apprentice. Apprentice and training are, are low wage, and these people with pandemic, they probably will not have health insurance. You've been gradually, you know, replacing full-time employees with two part-time, and the part-time don't have benefits, and there's, there are a lot of people who've left the city because they aren't taken care of and they're, they're passed over selectively. Okay? B, 1.5 million within the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, Ray, debt service payment. Transferring money from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, debt service payment. You don't have enough money, we don't have enough money to pay down the debt. It's why you have the bad, the low rating from the independent people, it's been as low as a D. Okay? C, 133,703, non-department operating budget. So it's not a department operating budget. Authorize the city manager to enter into a long-term lease with the Commonwealth of Virginia, reference the aquarium parking lot. You already have extra parking from Camp Pendleton. That is not a priority, everything is tied to tourism. You know, most of those streetlights aren't working, and I've said this repeatedly, and I don't know why the streetlights aren't fixed at the intersection of Laskin Road. All over the city, major intersections, no pitch dark. Oceana Boulevard, pitch dark. But you have the lights on for the adventure park. Ching, you're around tourism. I oppose, and thank you for your time.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Mayor, we have two individuals who have signed up on multiple items. I understand that you want to have those individuals come up and speak for the items that were going to be on consent, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Barbara Messner. And that will be for items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Planning items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
I wish Ms. Henley would, would speak, but I guess this isn't a regular meeting, even though it's supposed to be. The short-term rentals, we had a meeting here that went till 1:30 in the morning, and none of our recommendations were taken very seriously. A lot of people showed up. But these short-term rentals, you do not have the manpower. You don't even take the time to make sure the signs are properly posted for people who are applying for them. And they have the wrong date. Okay, this is 64th Street LLC, 205 64th Street, Lynn Haven District. Okay? These short-term rentals are taking over our entire city. Croatan, which was a really nice residential neighborhood, yes, there's been short-term rentals, but they were six months, the same thing for the north end, it used to be six months, summer, winter. These, one of them that I saw on an upcoming agenda, I don't know if it's this one, because it's all a blur, six bedrooms on the ocean at Croatan. You're going to consider six bedrooms, and they have, they can have parking for that. People park in the grass, they park in front of other people's houses, there is no enforcement. And Mr. Tahan usually has pictures up on a display, there it is, okay? But there's been several people who have spoken in opposition, you know, at the north end. And, and they're, they're ignored, you vote anyway. Mr. Jones was going out to speak to everyone at one time, Mr. Jones? Which, every council member should be in touch with these people. You shouldn't have, have it outsourced to staff, and their staff admits that their, their job is to help these people, to help the developers and the stakeholders with their applications.
The next item is number 2.
Okay. CNC Development Company and CJE Real Estate LLC Corporations for Conditional Use Permit, Short-Term Rental, 24th Antarctic, Unit B, Mr. Towers District, sorry, Beach District. Yeah, this, this isn't, we have hotels. You shouldn't be expanding and putting short-term rentals and destroying the neighborhoods. All these people, they buy up, I, you know, people have been asked, they've been approached for years by certain developers who I won't name, you know, pressuring them to sell their house, unreasonable amounts, because you just want to have short-term rentals. That's not, that's not a neighborhood environment, it's not safe for the children to have strangers coming and going two or three times a week. People back off on whether or not they have to agree to just, twice a week or once a week, because they know no one is going to enforce it. You don't have the staff and you don't care, you just want the revenue. So I'm, I'm in opposition. Okay, 3, Stuart and Lori Goldwag, Conditional Use Permit, Short-Term Rental, Baltic Avenue, A and B. Traffic is a nightmare, and you have something called overlays where you block off streets, and you have certain times where people can park, you have the same problem with the Cavalier. You can't just restrict people from public roads and public access for, by expanding hotels for, for revenue. I oppose all of these, and you're all liable when you vote because you've been told repeatedly that you don't have the manpower and the neighbors don't want these. And, you know, everyone watched your votes, you know, after Westminster and how many people spoke and I've shadowed on, but we don't really have a lot of options as far as voting out anyone because we don't have that many, if we had anybody really that cared, they would be here. I wouldn't be here, I don't run. Okay, 4, JKS Proponent Properties LLC. Short-term rental, 304 28th Street. That's close to the Harris Teeter, the Harris Teeter gets all the overflow parking. You have a Taco Bell there for another special interest. Most of you, directly or indirectly, are funded by the hotel industry and the taxes that stay in these taxing districts. I would like to see somebody abstain, although I would, I would be shocked.
The next speaker will be Jay Boone. Ms. Boone will also be speaking on planning items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Welcome, good evening.
Thank you. You said, are all of them still, all of them are still on, right?
Ma'am, the first item is planning item 1. So the ones that, the ones that you'll be speaking on at the moment are 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Okay.
For planning.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I will keep it pretty simple, they're all kind of the same to me in the sense, as a citizen, I just feel like it's, everyone's right if they own a property to be able to run it out however they see fit. Myself, I've seen how something in the water has come, it's great for the area, great, but at the same time, I saw so many people's weddings get destroyed as far as like reservations getting taken, hike, hiking up in prices, just price gouging, there's what, like 11 hotels at best on the oceanfront? You guys don't plan on spreading the wealth out with the light rail or any other thing, so this is a way that a citizen can make a little bit of money on the end, on their end, be able to pay their taxes and everything else that's going on, and just make a living. And I just think that it's in its best, in the best interest for our area, we're growing. Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads in general, it's a great area, like, we have so many opportunities, one of the best military facilities, we have people, influx of people, we didn't get hit by the recession the way that other areas did, but for some reason, we're blocked, and I feel like overall, it just comes down to leadership. Like, we can't dock people for poor leadership, it's already what, October, we're going into November, and we're still talking about policies and, and stipulations on Airbnb's and things that you guys have okayed countless week after week after week, but we still don't have regulations for it? If you guys don't care, and you guys are elected officials, you can't expect citizens to care, and you can't expect them to not, in the interim, not make money and not make a living when you guys are not doing what you're supposed to do as elected officials. So I approve it, I'm glad that you guys are now letting private companies and things like that come in as well as citizens, because I feel like maybe I can, I and some of my friends can go ahead and stop dollar money, start a LLC and start buying properties and running them out as well. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, ready for the consenting agenda, Mr. Wood?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval on the consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions. Item 2, resolution to move the November 3rd, 2020, regular meeting of the city council to November 10th, 2020. Item 3, ordinance to amend city code section 2-20, Ray, location of city council meetings. Item 4, resolution to formally re-adopt the Virginia Beach Emergency Operations Plan. Number 5, resolution to authorize the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bond, series 2020, in aggregate prin- in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,445,000 and the execution and delivery of certain documents prepared in connection therewith. Item Six, Resolution to Designate Virginia Beach as a B-City USA affiliate. Item Seven, Ordinance to Establish New Capital Improvement Projects for the FY 2020/2021 and Transfer $738,534 from the Capital, Capital Project Number 100423, Traffic Safety, Traffic Safety Improvements IV to the Newly Created Capital Projects, A, 100554 Independence Boulevard, Columbus Street, Pedestrian Improvements; B, 100555, Parliament Drive Sidewalk Phase I; C, 100556, Sandbridge Road Sidewalk. Item Eight, Ordinance to Adopt Revised Regulations for Resort Area Outdoor Cafe Franchise. Item Nine, Ordinance to Grant a Franchise Agreement for an Open Air Cafe at the Resort Area to Thirsty 24 LLC, Trading as Atlantic Pints, at 2314 Atlantic Avenue, Ray Atlantic Avenue Sidewalk Cafe. Item Ten, Ordinance to Authorize, A, Acquisition of an Agriculture Land Preservation Easement from Holly Road LLC and Ola Hill Kruger; B, Issuance by the City of Its Contract Obligation in the Maximum Principal Amount of $681,174; and C, Transfer Funds to Purchase U.S. Treasury Strips. Item Eleven, Ordinance to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Lease of City-Owned Property for Up to Five Years with Back Bay Wildfowl Guild Incorporated at 1113 Atlantic Avenue, Ray the Dewick Cottage. Number Twelve, Ordinance to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Building Lease and Cooperative Agreement for Up to Five Years with Senior Resource Center Incorporated at 912 Princess Stan Road, Ray Provides Support and Services to Senior Citizens Residing in the Southern Part of Virginia Beach. Item Thirteen, which is Consent for Differral to December 18th, 2020, Ordinance to Authorize the Acquisition of a Property in Fee Simple, Ray Princess San Plaza, North London Bridge Creek Pump Station Project, CIP 7-089, and the Acquisition of Temporary and Permanent Easements Either by Agreement or Condemnation.
Vice Mayor Wood, that's to December the 8th.
What did I say?
18th.
December 8th, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay. Item Fourteen, Ordinance to Authorize a Temporary Encroachment into a Portion of City-Owned Property Known as Treasure Canal and Bay Island Adjacent to 2233 Spinnaker Circle, Ray Construct and Maintain a Proposed Boat Lift. Item Fifteen, which is Consent for Indefinite Differral, Ordinance to Authorize a Temporary Encroachment into a Portion of Existing Unimproved City Rideaway at the Corner of Schuman Drive, Formerly Old Dam Neck Road and Firefall Drive, Located Adjacent to 684 Firefall Drive, Ray Construct and Maintain an Interpretive Park Comprised of an Asphalt Park Bordered with Reclaimed Brick, Five Interpretive Signs, Three Benches, Trash Receptacles, and a Dog Waste Station. Item Sixteen, Ordinance to Reserve Fund Balance Within the General Fund for the Pandemic Financial Relief and Assistance and Appropriate $10 Million in Grants to the United Way of Southampton Roads, $8 Million, and FY 2020/2021 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget, $2 Million, Ray Emergency Assistance for Residents and Nonprofit Volunteer Rescue Squads. Item Seventeen, Ordinance to Appropriate 2.4 Million of Fund Balance to the General Fund and $831,851 of Fund Balance in the Waste Management Enterprise Fund, Ray Purchase of Replacement Vehicles and Equipment. Item Eighteen, G, that would be, Ordinance to Accept and Appropriate $39,258,497 from the United States Department of Treasury CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund to the FY 2020/2021 Grant Fund, Ray Reimbursable Expenses. Item I, $836,401 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to the FY 2020/2021 Emergency Management Operating Budget, Ray Regional Housing Plan Project; C, $2941,791 from Housing and Urban Development and Federal Funding and Program Income to the FY 2020/2021 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Operating Budget, Ray Adjustments of the Community Development Block Grant Housing Choice Voucher and Home Program. Item Nineteen, Ordinances to Transfer, A, $180,000 Within the Waste Management Enterprise Fund and Authorize 7.5 Temporary Part-Time Positions, Ray Apprentice Program; B, $1.5 Million Within the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, Ray Debt Service Payments; C, $133,703 to Non-Departmental Operating Budget and Authorize the City Manager to Enter Into a Long-Term Lease with the Commonwealth of Virginia, Ray Virginia Aquarium Parking Lot Premises.
Open a, open a hearing on planning?
Under Planning, Item J1, 64th Street LLC For Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 205 64th Street, Noting That Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley Are Voting No. Item Two, CNC Development Company Incorporated and CJE Real Estate LLC For Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 2416 Arctic Avenue, Unit B, Noting That Ms. Henley Is Voting No on That Item. Item Six, Stuart and Lori Goldwag For Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 2002 Baltic Avenue, Unit A and Unit B, Noting Ms. Henley Is Voting Nay on That Item. JKS Proponent Properties LLC For Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 304 28th Street, Unit Number 209, Noting That Ms. Henley Is Voting Nay on That Item. Item Five, Rachel Panarell for a Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit A, Noting Ms. Henley Is Voting Nay on That Item. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second? Okay, we have the motion in a second. Second, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Voting No on Item I-10, Otherwise Yay.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood, noting that nay, nay votes.
Okay, at this point, we'll go to Ordinances Resolution Number One. Are the speakers on all the A through F?
The first, the first speaker is Carrie Cuppenhaver. And after Ms. Cuppenhaver, be Conrad Agresti. I'm sorry.
Right there?
Carrie Cuppenhaver.
Okay, come, come forward, come forward.
Conrad Agresti. Are you Mr. Agresti? Thank you. And then Gail Matola.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Conrad Agresti. I'm a Vice President of Croatan Civic League. We've discussed this issue at length, and I rise to support the referral to the Planning Commission, which is the vote right now. We're not going to make the sausage here tonight. There's just one request that I wish that you would take on board, that the Planning Commission understand that when it comes back from them, you, you all take a look at. And that's to ensure that there's some parallelism between City Zoning Ordinance 241.2 on Short-Term Rentals and the new proposed Article 23, Establishing Regulations and Requirements on Short-Term Rentals in the Overlay Districts. Right now, there are discontinu, discontinuities with numbers of persons allowed per bedroom and for numbers of rentals or leases per annum. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gail Matola. Gail Matola. And then Janet Moreno will be following Ms. Matola.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Gail Matola, 115 88th Street in Virginia Beach. And I might add that I was also an owner and resident in Ocean Park in Pelican Dunes several years ago. I oppose the addition of the three overlays, the North End, the East Shore Drive, and West Shore Drive to the official zoning map. Please tell me what authority the City Council is invoking to establish and amend these short-term rental overlay districts? And I am looking for an answer. No one is going to answer. I will speak.
With due respect, ma'am, you know, this is, you know, this is, we're going to have the discussion on this and then the item is to, just to be referred to, you know, the Planning Commission. So we're here to listen to you.
I will speak only of the North End and the rest of my opposition, but I do support Ocean Park and these Shore Drive overlays. One of the amendments proposed by Mr. Tower, I believe, stated any future overlays must require 60% of the owners wanting the overlay. The property owners in the North End had no vote by referendum to choose their property to be a part of the overlay. Council action in 2015 changed the North End from a residential district to an unofficial resort rental residential district, inflicting short-term rentals, increased density and traffic on smaller 7,500 square foot lots. It was once a multi-generational and quiet neighborhood. Again, now the change without a public vote. I understand the Dillon Rule of 1896 requires approval by the Virginia General Assembly for any City Council or Board of Supervisors to change the character and culture with lack of city police, fire, and emergency services provided for an increased-density zoning district. In this case, opening up the North End for future commercial development because they have become labeled.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Resort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Moreno. And after Ms. Moreno will be Todd Solomon.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about my situation and in regards to the, these changes that are being proposed. After searching, I purchased a townhouse in Shadowline on October 31st of 2019 with the intention of living in it for most of the year, renting it out on a weekly basis for all or part of the summer. This was to be part of my retirement plan, as I hope to retire within the next few years. The additional summer income was to make the adjustment to retired life a little easier. I carefully researched the STR ordinance to be sure I was buying a property that met the requirements. I followed all the steps in the application process. $50 business license, $350 property survey, $360 for the application, and of course, the large orange sign out in front of my property for what turned out to be many months. I even had a few of my neighbors write letters in favor of my application. The process was long and complicated, but I finally received my approval. If the latest James Woods proposal passes, I will not be able to renew my permit once it expires, as I reside outside of the overlay districts. This decision to arbitrarily change the playing field does not seem fair, especially to those that are trying to operate responsible, legitimate, high-quality, short-term rental. I believe someone needs to ring the timeout bell and figure out what regulations are needed and what are overkill. The overlay districts include some of the most expensive properties in Virginia Beach, properties well out of my reach, as well as most average, hard-working citizens. Why must we be excluded, is my question? Possible alternative solutions could include some type of density clause to prevent the overabundance of short-term rentals and caps on how many short-term rentals individuals or corporations can own. In the very least, those of us who have struggled through the process of obtaining our conditional use permits should be grandfathered to allow us to continue applying for a conditional use permit as long as we own the property and follow the rules. Thus far, I've been speaking from the perspective of a short-term rental owner. I would like to add that the townhouse directly next to me is a full-time short-term rental, which I have, which I share a common wall with. In the 12 months I've resided in my home, I've had no issues with any of the guests who have stayed there, and the property is well-maintained. In fact, I have more issues and complaints with the long-term tenants who live directly behind my unit. My bedroom overlooks their yard strewn with garbage and a broken-down, uncovered hot tub. Their dogs are left out at all hours of the night and day, and they frequently disrupt my sleep. I can honestly tell you, I'd far, far rather have a short-term rental behind me than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Todd Solomon. After Mr. Solomon, it's Scott Ayers.
Welcome back.
You'll see me one more time tonight. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, council members. I'm here speaking. My name's Todd Solomon. I live in one of the two districts on the Bayside, or the Bayfront area that you're creating. My home is within the district on the east side of the Lesnar Bridge. You've segmented roughly 350 of our 600 homes. So you've separated Cape Story by the Sea, which has been in existence for, forever, since I've known it. So you're dividing this neighborhood right down the middle, almost. You're doing so, again, without civic engagement. And I keep badgering that. I'm beating that drum. And in fact, the next time I come here, I'll bring a drum, and I'll just keep pounding it, and you'll understand it's civic engagement, civic engagement. Westminster Canterbury, short-term rentals, whatever else, you're failing on civic engagement. You had the opportunity. It was nice to see Councilman Jones and Councilman Wood come to a Bayside Advisory Committee meeting. We kind of called it the Groundhog Day. And once a year, they pop up at that, or even like a seven-year or whatever for cicada, they show up. So it was nice to see that. But you need to be doing that all the time. You should have some type of civic town hall, an online town hall, something you can answer. I mean, I learned so much. Unfortunately, it was at 3:30 in the afternoon, and everybody who works can't actually come and understand your background on it. It'd be nice to do that online for everybody under. You spent two years coming up with this short-term rental plan, and now you're trying to force it through in a couple of months. But anyways, the overlay anywhere on the Bayfront, I think, is, is not the right place to put it. Put it at the oceanfront, put it at a resort, wherever the majority of the short-term rentals are now. There's only 18 units in the overlay that you're proposing for the east side of Lesnar Bridge. 18 out of 350. And magically, now it becomes an overlay district. So I, again, I asked Mr. Wood, I don't know how that came about. How does that come about? And it's only been two conditional use permits, and one of them was opposed. So how, how does that even pop up on the radar as an overlay district? Again, civic engagement, the failure of it, from all of you on the council, is getting involved in civic engagement. You have the opportunity now before Planning Commission, before, or have Planning Commission do some civic engagement. You can do it. Your IT guys are great. Kevin Fairley, I've worked with him. He's wonderful. He could set something up for you and do it beforehand. But get the input from civic engagement. And again, don't have short-term overlays. The districts, short-term rentals on Shore Drive, I think, Oceanfront, if you want to create an overlay, put it where, I mean, all of these, in fact, all, what, eight of them here on the Beach District for tonight? And then the majority of them show up in that area. Keep them down there. Let everybody else. If somebody wants to create a district, you have that opportunity. 60, let developers or whoever want to create it, get 60% of the residents to create the district. Don't, by default, throw a district on us and force us to try and get rid of it. So that's my two cents. And again, civic engagement, civic engagement, civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Ayers is next. The next speaker is Scott Ayers. And after Mr. Ayers will be Chuck Hartman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Scott Ayers. I have lived in Ocean Park for almost 40 years. I've been a real estate broker for almost 50 years. I've been a real estate broker for almost 50 years, and I know what short-term rentals do to value of our property. In the Ocean Park section, which is labeled as part of the overlay district, there are only four short-term rentals. There have been two short-term rentals in Ocean Park for 40 years. There's only been two applications that I know of. Now, take a look at Chesapeake Beach. Chesapeake Beach, similar community, they have over 20 short-term rentals, yet they were removed from the overlay district. It does not seem fair. Additionally, what you have established for a hearing public process is okay. Let the neighborhoods decide. That seemed fair. I've watched it come and go, and I know you've got a big burden here trying to manage it, but there's got to be another way to do it. Limit the number that come before council. Limit the number that go through planning, but don't decide that a neighborhood that is mostly families with lots of kids needs an overlay district to tell them how to manage their neighborhood. Let it go through the public process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chuck Hartman. And after Mr. Hartman is Mary Noonan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Chuck Hartman, and I'm the president of the Arizona Bay Civic League. Arizona Bay is on the western edge of the Ocean Park Overlay District, comprises of Ares Way, Rookery Way, Wood-Ivis Court, several other streets. We strongly oppose being included in this overlay district. There's a mistaken idea that since we're in Ocean Park, we in fact are part of the Ocean Park Civic League. That is not true. We have our own civic league, we have our own restrictive covenants, which is why the civic league exists. I understand the city has no bearing or no involvement in our restrictive covenants, but creating this overlay district will make our jobs physically impossible. Imagine people going into Ares, a very tightly-knit, high-density community that's already had one applicant denied by the Planning Commission. Imagine people going in there, buying a property, and saying, "Oh, it's my right now because the city passed this short-term rental regulation." Well, when they say it's all right, then we have to spring into action and pay court costs. Sorry about that.
Just step back from the mic just a bit. Yeah, there you go. We'll hear you.
Okay. So what ends up happening is that since we have to enforce these restricted covenants as a private entity without city involvement, we end up having to go to court to fight these. We've already spent thousands of dollars just to verify that our restricted covenants are work, are legal and valid. If this right is given for short-term rentals in Ocean Park, residents will just go ahead and say, "I'm doing this, this is my right." It doesn't matter what your short-term, what your restricted covenants say. Anyways, I want to make sure that in the final crafting of this overlay district, Ocean Park, Arizona Bay is not included. Thank you.
My next speaker is Mary Noonan. And then Greg Lewis.
Well, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Mary Noonan, and I'm an Ocean Park resident. Thank you for allowing me to speak today in opposition to the proposal to create an overlay district in Ocean Park. Many of you are on the record talking about the destructive nature of short-term rentals to a neighborhood over the past few years as you develop the conditional use permit process. In fact, in this very proposal, in justifying excluding most of Virginia Beach from the overlay proposal, you state that short-term rentals, quote, "are often the cause of excessive noise, illegal, or improper parking, traffic violations, congestion, and litter, thereby interfering with the quiet enjoyment of the residential neighborhood in which they occur," end quote. So why was Ocean Park chosen for this destruction? One of the reasons you cited was, quote, "overlays are in an area where multiple family dwellings are common and are located close to the Chesapeake Bay. Other areas of Shore Drive contain more single-family dwellings and are not as compatible with the activities of a short-term rental." In fact, the Planning Commission just last week denied an Ocean Park residence conditional use permit. In doing so, they cited the high density of the neighborhood, the number of multiple family dwelling homes, the narrowness of its streets, the lack of parking, the fact that proximity to other neighbors would make it incompatible with the activities of short-term rental. Had the overlay been in place, this person would be operating a short-term rental today, even though it is unsuitable for that purpose. Planning Council rightly noted high-density areas would be a reason for exclusion, not inclusion, of short-term rentals. According to Virginia Code, in which the governing body is initiating the zoning ordinance amendment, such as in this case, the initiating resolution must include the public purpose language as required by the code detailing the benefit to the public, the zoning ordinance amendment. That criteria has not been met in this case. In addressing this purpose, City Council stated that, quote, "short-term rentals are a needed resource in certain areas of the city located in close proximity to venues or districts that generate a high volume of people." In the overlay area of Ocean Park as proposed, there are no venues. The only retailers are 7-Eleven and a gift shop, a couple of small office-type spaces, and one restaurant. All of those around Shore Drive, there is no commercial property within the neighborhood itself, and parking is extremely limited. In contrast, you're excluding short-term rentals from areas like Chesapeake Beach, Hilltop, Town Center, Kempsville, Strawbridge, all of which are in much closer proximity to venues, multiple restaurants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
The next, the next speaker is Greg, Greg Lewis. And after Mr. Lewis will be Bill Rouse.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. I am a homeowner and Virginia Beach resident who lives on Rookery Way in the Ares on the Bay neighborhood. I'll just chime on to what Chuck said earlier. Ares on the Bay is currently located in, or currently included in the Ocean Park STR overlay. I purchased my property in 2014 and lived in the neighborhood for the past six years. I have been a member of the Ares on the Bay Civic League for two years. So tonight, on behalf of the Ares, Ares on the Bay Civic League and the numerous neighbors I have spoken with on this matter, I'm requesting that Ares on the Bay neighborhood be removed from the Ocean Park short-term rental overlay proposal. The Ares on the Bay Civic League unanimously supports the neighborhood's removal from the Ocean Park community's STR overlay. I'm not here to speak against the STR overlay proposal. I am a supporter of STRs. My family has enjoyed using STRs in both Sandbridge and the North End. I do understand the desire to have a more efficient progress for granting conditional use for STRs, and I'm all for progress. The Ares on the Bay neighborhood is not at all conducive to STRs. The compactness of the community and resulting effect on the parking are already a challenge for residents. The congested parking and traffic are difficult during the off-season, and those issues increase exponentially during tourist season. While our neighborhood does have public beach access, it is first and foremost a neighborhood. Our children play here together. We're concerned about the volume of total strangers that would conceivably be rotating through the various STRs in our neighborhood. Regardless of what the vetting process, the STR companies claim they have established, the magnitude of potential risk increases with every new short-term renter. Yes, there are some parties in our neighborhood, but those parties generally occur only on weekends and holidays. If our, if our neighborhood was open to STRs, the neighborhood would be party central every single night. For our neighborhood, the beach is our backyard. We are welcoming to visitors and full of respect to public beach access. We have, we as a neighborhood have a vested interest in keeping the beach safe and clean. I can't think of any of our neighbors who participated in floatopia. Even if we did participate, I'm sure that the ones, that they weren't the ones who left tons of trash that got Virginia Beach into the national news. We are the citizens who pick up the trash, and you tell folks to get off of the dunes. We're also the citizens who remind visitors to slow down as they traverse through our neighborhood. I doubt you would see the same level of effort from an STR community. I understand that the city is not taking into consideration our neighborhood's de-restrictive covenants. Regardless of that, I do request that the council strongly consider the character of the Ares on the Bay neighborhood and the citizens who are raising families there, and remove Ares on the Bay from the Ocean Park STR overlay. Thank you, and semper fidelis, sir.
Thank you.
Phil Rouse. And after Mr. Rouse is Chris Harrell.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Phil Rouse. I live in Jefferson Boulevard, north of Shore Drive in the Ocean Park area. That's currently included for submission in the short-term rental overlay. I've lived in the community for 10 years, and I moved specifically and bought in the area because of its neighborhood, its characteristics, and its impact. And short-term rental being part of the overlay would diminish that, and so I'm here to oppose our Ocean Park inclusion in the short-term rental overlay. The civic league for Ocean Park has been surveyed, the areas recently, the owners, and had over 90% suggest that they did, that they opposed being included. Many attended the recent Bay Area Commission with many members, and I learned about the short-term overlay problem and the proposal. And their suggestion was that we attend in council to demonstrate that our opposition to register, that emails and other activities were less effective. So there's quite a few members here tonight to speak and to support. It is a little difficult. I know the suggestion, Mr. Woods, was that we'd have the people stand up, but since there's an overflow area, you can't see the true magnitude, I guess, of the people we're here representing. We just want to have, hopefully, that Ocean Park has demonstrated opposition to being a part of included in this overlay district. We ask the council to amend the submission to the Planning Commission to exclude Ocean Park from the short-term overlay as the default. Don't make us come back yet again in the COVID era to go to the Planning Commission, note our opposition there. If, if we've demonstrated to you upfront that we have opposition to it, then we ask that we just not be a part of the process going forward. We didn't, we don't want this. We didn't ask for it, and so please alter your submission to remove Ocean Park from the short-term overlay district consideration. Thank you.
Chris Harrell. And after Mr. Harrell will be Robert Shelton.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Harrell. I live in Croatan at 516 Sursside Avenue, and I'm here to request that people who have been running short-term rentals successfully and in a positive way be able to continue to do that in the future. A little bit about our story. My wife Kathy and I bought our house in Croatan in 2010. Our arrangement at that time was to pay the mortgage ourselves, but then use income from renting the house out to renovate it. The previous owner had neglected the house. He had three of his cousins who had all graduated from the same fraternity staying in the house, and they were not taking very good care of it. So when we bought it, we had a lot of work to do. Over the years, we've made approximately $150,000 in rental income, and we've spent more than that actually upgrading the house. We painted the exterior, we had landscaping done to the outside, and, and it's been a win for us, but it's also, I feel like it's been a win for our neighborhood. Because we had a house which was in bad shape, pulling the properties down. We came in and we used our rental income to bring it up again so that it wasn't doing that anymore. And it's, it's also been a win, I feel like, for, for our guests and for, and for the local businesses who, who have helped us with all of that work. Everybody from Blessings Plumbing, Dreamscape Designers, Walsh Electric, like everybody, $150,000 in their pockets over the years. And it's been, I feel like it's also been a benefit to our neighbors in a lot of ways, too. I mean, you don't hear about the, the good things that happen, like my next-door neighbor had her mom and dad come into town, and her cousins, and they didn't have enough room to stay in their house, so she rented the house next door, my house, and we, you know, we gave them a huge discount, and it worked out quite well for them, actually. And there's, there's other things like that that you don't hear about. You know, it's, it's been a win for our guests, too. You know, 2020's been a rough year for everybody, and we've had a pandemic. And one of the things that's a good idea to do in a pandemic, if you need a vacation, is to rent a single-family house, maybe with some members of your family. We've had people come and do that this year, and, and they've had a good experience, you know? And the other thing is, in times of, of COVID, it's, beach access is important, you know, like being able to blow off some steam. You know, beach access is, is an important experience. People, to be able to bring your children to the beach and walk them down and then walk them back, throw their stuff in the washing machine, and then go upstairs and make them a sandwich, and have everybody eat dinner around the table together. That's, that's the kind of vacation that really people need this year. And, and people have been able to have it. And, and it's also actually, I think, a beach access issue as well, because Croatan's an expensive neighborhood, and if you can't afford to buy a house there, then, you know, you can at least rent it for a couple of days or a week, and that's, that's a really nice experience that people should be able to have, and we shouldn't be able, we shouldn't tell them that they can't have it just because they're poor, or they can't afford to buy a house there. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just here to ask you, please don't throw away the benefits of, of short-term rentals over issues that can be improved with good management. And I ask that you just, for people who have been running their, their, their STRA as well, or the short-term rentals as well, that they be able to continue to do that in perpetuity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Robert Shelton. After Mr. Shelton is Jane Shelton.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Shelton. I'm a member of Ocean Park. I've been a resident in that neighborhood for over 20 years. I purchased in that neighborhood strictly because the fact that it was a neighborhood. And I'm against the overlay, the blanket overlay of short-term rentals for our neighborhood. The city wants to make our neighborhood a blanket planning approval, approved planning area. Basically, so they don't have to work so hard, and the planning department doesn't have to work so hard. But what about the police, the fire departments, the EMS? They're gonna have increased calls, and it's gonna increase their response times. These items are going to cause the neighborhood to suffer. Ocean Park is a family area. It's not a commercial zone. We have loads of children, and ST, and short-term rentals will have no safeguards to protect our children that are playing in the street from the sex offenders who'll be coming in weekly with no control. This is bad behavior. Their bad behavior is not something we want to expose our children to, and here, the children will suffer. This is a densely populated area, already with a parking problem. And we increase the number of people in the neighborhood through short-term rentals, the neighborhood's going to suffer. With this change in, our property values will decrease. Many owners, the neighborhood, have invested time, money, and energy to increase their value of their property in the neighborhood. Lower properties will, lower property values will make the city suffer. You have to protect the city from the developers that want to create weekly floatopias. This is not what our neighborhood's all about. Your job is to protect us. You're the citizens. We elected you, and we expect you to hear, to hear our voice. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jane Shelton. And after Ms. Shelton is Mike Wills.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of city council. I'm Jane Shelton, a resident and owner in Ocean Park for almost 15 years. Our neighborhood is just a regular neighborhood with regular people working regular jobs. We're a tight-knit community where most everyone has friends sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. We know who lives next door, down the street, and around the corner. We know who lives next door, down the street, and around the corner. Our neighborhood is more dense, more densely populated than most throughout the city, and because we have very small lots, it's common to see children playing in the street. Our streets are tight, there are very few sidewalks, and parking is limited, especially during the summer season, and the police already have a difficult time enforcing our parking issues to ensure that emergency vehicles can get through. We are also a very active community. If you drive through our neighborhood on any given day, not only will you see children playing, but you will also encounter numerous folks biking, jogging, walking, some with whom will be accompanied by a stroller or a dog or two. We're not like Sandbridge, the Oceanfront, or the North End, where it's common for those properties to be someone's second home or a rental. By designating Ocean Park as an overlay district, you are encouraging short-term rentals into our neighborhood and inviting them next to our homes, where they will inevitably be a significant impact on the character of our precious neighborhood. There will be more parties, more noise, more parking issues, and more trash. It will threaten and disturb the quality of life of the Ocean Park residents, which is currently peaceful and safe. Approving this overlay district in Ocean Park will also have a negative impact on our property values, which is great concern. My husband and I took a walk through the neighborhood this past Sunday and decided to knock on some doors to make sure our neighbors were aware of what was going on regarding the overlay district. To our surprise, of those that we spoke with, only one was even aware of today's meeting. All but one expressed their opposition to the short-term rentals and this overlay district proposal. It is clear that the residents of this city and in these overlay districts need to be put on official notice and well-informed before City Council takes further action that affect our properties possibly permanently. This issue is very personal to each and every resident in an overlay district. How many of you live in these proposed overlay districts? It is unfair to cherry-pick neighborhoods for which to impose such an overlay and essentially change zoning of our properties from strictly residential to permitting business 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Wills, and after Mr. Wills is Jonathan Macy.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, City Council members. My name is Mike Wills, and I've been a resident of Ocean Park for over 20 years. I'd like to start tonight by reading a definition to you. Community: A group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. A feeling, a fellowship with others, as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. That is precisely what will be destroyed in short order if this proposal to grant short-term rental rights is ultimately approved. Our community, Ocean Park. Ocean Park is primarily long-term resident property owners who decide to make Ocean Park their homes in hopes of enjoying their properties and fellowship with their neighbors without the nuisance of strangers coming and going. We do not wish to live in a short-term rental transient-type neighborhood for the obvious reasons. If we wanted to live in mixed-use areas with strangers and high activity, we'd buy dwelling units in Town Center or downtown Norfolk. Residential property rights are well-defined in the zoning codes of Virginia Beach. When you buy a property zoned as residential, you know what the rules are and the permitted uses are. If someone wants to run a business or an inn, one should buy a property zoned for business. The purpose of single-family residential property is not to maximize the economic benefits. That's what for-profit business is for and should be conducted on property already zoned as such. In Virginia Beach, we are fortunate to have a very attractive and vibrant short-term rental district already. It's called the Oceanfront. I'm sure most of you are very familiar with it. The citizens of Virginia Beach have invested heavily in the hotel industry at the Oceanfront, and it's nicely equipped at this point to accommodate those who desire short-term rental access in Virginia Beach. So, I respectfully ask that you please remove Ocean Park from any proposal to establish short-term overlays so that we may preserve the community that we have made our home. Please enforce the existing zoning laws and stop the proliferation of short-term rental properties in areas where they are not desired without the positive consent of the community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jonathan Macy, and after Mr. Macy is Ken Christman.
Mayor and members of council, my name is Jonathan Macy. I've been a resident of Ocean Park for over a decade. Based on the city's data from STR Weekly Report, which was obtained through the information from Freedom Act, there are 11 short-term rental properties in the proposed overlay for Ocean Park. The Ocean Park Civic League's website states there are approximately 1,800 residents in Ocean Park, with approximately 469 of those on the south side of Shore Drive. The calculated short-term rental density for the proposed overlay has one short-term rental per 121 residents. Across Shore Drive, it's one per 52. It's almost double in terms of residence, or short-term rental density across the street, and yet it's not been included in the overlay. From the proposed Short-Term Rental Regulation Changes Presentation made on September 15, 2020, it stated, "Rezone specific areas to short-term rental overlay districts. Properties located in overlays meeting the criteria of the zoning ordinance, the STR is permitted as a matter of right. STR will not be permitted outside the overlay districts. Those outside of overlays will not be permitted to operate when STR expires. Going forward, this change will drive all new short-term rental and existing conditional use permit ownerships into a STR overlay. By default, this action will increase the density of STRs in Ocean Park to a higher density." Proposed Article 23 states, quote, "In other areas of the city, short-term rentals are not compatible with residential use of the surrounding properties, and are often the cause of excessive noise, illegal or improper parking, traffic violations, congestion, and litter, thereby interfering with the quiet enjoyment of the residential neighborhood in which they occur," end quote. Having had the opportunity to live a few residents down from a short-term rental that was in place for a couple of years, I believe the city has done an excellent job documenting the issues associated with short-term rentals. Based on the city's own admission on the issues associated with short-term rentals, how can they, how can the density of STRs be allowed to increase in Ocean Park without adversely affecting the quiet enjoyment of neighborhood properties? Ocean Park has a very low ratio of only one short-term rental per 121 residents in the overlay that you're proposing. I oppose the short-term rental overlay for the following reasons. Any increase in short-term rentals will adversely affect the quiet enjoyment of neighborhood properties as specified in Article 23. Any increase in short-term rentals for Ocean Park would be in direct conflict. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ken Christman, and after Mr. Christman is Patrick Gazola.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, who's not in the room, and the rest of council. I'm Ken Christman. I live at 2237 Roanoke Avenue in the heart of Ocean Park. And as been stated by some other speakers this evening, we're a neighborhood, we're a community, and we are densely populated, as has been pointed out. We have very thin streets, and if you impose this STR on us, which it is imposing it on us, because we adamantly are opposed to it. If you impose this on it, as has been pointed out by other speakers, it's going to increase the response time for emergency services. That's a danger to us all. There's going to be increased traffic in the neighborhood, increased transients, people that have no connection to our neighborhood other than renting it for a week. So, they really don't care too much what happens there. And that's a real concern for all of us, I think. And I believe that Mr. Jones did attend the Bay Advisory Council Meeting. We appreciate him coming. Thank you. But I believe that maybe this thing started with a letter from the former president of Ocean Park Civic League two and a half years ago. And my understanding of this letter, which was addressed to Mr. Jones, was that no one on the board approved it. It was done, as we call in the law, an ultraverrous act, and it was misrepresented. It says that the Board of Directors supports STRs. This was two and a half years ago. This was done without approval of the Board of Directors, sent to Vice Mayor Jones, at the time Vice Mayor Jones, and it misrepresented our position. We've since taken two surveys. They show 90% opposition, and you've been sent another letter correcting the letter written two and a half years ago by the ex-president of our Civic League. I ask you to sever us, Ocean Park, from this STR plan. It's the right thing to do, and it's what your constituents want. Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Gazola, and then Michael Gazola.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for your time. My name is Patrick Gazolo. I live in the Ocean Park neighborhood with my wife. My brother also lives in the neighborhood with his family, his wife, and two kids. My sister is nearby in the Thoroughgood community. I think we are blessed to live in a city with a robust tourism industry, but we also have strong residential neighborhoods with strong community ties. Including Ocean Park in the overlay district, I believe, could jeopardize this community. Secondary, the STR is a stepping stone for further commercialization of the Shore Drive corridor. I am opposed to including Ocean Drive in the overlay district for STR. Thank you.
Michael Gazola, and then Stacey Kellum.
My name is Michael Gazolo. I'm a resident of the Ocean Park neighborhood. You just met my brother. I am married with two young children. I oppose the changing of the Ocean Park for short-term rentals. My neighborhood is primarily permanent residents and families who contribute to the city of Virginia Beach. When a house goes up for sale, it sells very quickly. It's pretty competitive to get into the neighborhood. Right now, that sale means a new family is coming in and contributing to the city. I would hate to see it turned into speculative buying for the purposes of short-term rentals, restricting access for future families and people like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacey Kellum, and after Ms. Kellum will be Howard Kern.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Stacey Kellum, and I join the people here tonight from Ocean Park and areas on the Bay where I've lived for 21 years in opposition to the overlay project. Virginia Beach has allowed our oceanfront and bayfront communities to become overpopulated and unsafe. We've allowed enormous growth to the beachfront neighborhoods for the past 20 years or more. It remains unchecked with continuing permits for multi-occupancy dwellings. What was once a charming historic beachfront has become inundated with multi-story condos, taking away the beautiful views of the ocean and bay. Lots that once contained single-family homes have been replaced with multi-story, multifamily condos. Congestion has taxed our emergency response personnel, making it impossible to control. A fire on a windy day could wipe out an entire city block. Children have no safe places to play. The overlay zoning would further contribute to blight and decay in our community as absent property owners ignore maintenance. Increased transient visitors are not aware of the issues indigenous to our community, nor are they concerned. Issues such as flooding, beach erosion, and other environmental concerns, the needs and requirements of first responders, infrastructure, parking, trash collection. Residents' tax dollars pay for these things. The overlay would permit numerous short-term renters introducing crime to our neighborhoods. Longtime residents of the proposed overlay district would be forced from their homes in surf of safe, quiet communities, free of nightly parties, maybe even driven out of Virginia Beach altogether. The overlay brings nothing positive to these communities. It doesn't bring in additional tax monies. It doesn't beautify the area. It doesn't clean up the environment. It doesn't bring safety to our streets. It is not beneficial in any way, and I urge you to oppose the proposal for overlay zoning in all currently proposed short-term rentals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Howard Kern, and after Mr. Kern will be Daniel Murphy.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council. My name is Howard Kern. I am a resident of Ocean Park, 3824 Jefferson Boulevard. I have lived in Virginia Beach for almost 41 years and have lived in neighborhoods including Kempsville, Middle Plantation, Klein Farms, and now Ocean Park. I speak in opposition to the overlay district zoning for a number of reasons. In all these years as a resident of Virginia Beach, I've been proud to be a resident of Virginia Beach, and I've never been compelled to come and defend my right to own my residence and have to protect it from inclusion, from commercial development such as being proposed here. We deserve a right to enjoy a quiet, safe, peaceful, and family-oriented residential neighborhood, and especially after all of us have made significant investments and carefully selected these neighborhoods for those criteria and qualities. U.S. City Council leaders are now in the process of considering the imposition of new zoning regulations on a residential area where many have lived for years in peaceful harmony, thereby converting our neighborhood that once was a community to a commercially-zoned district for rental for short-term use. You do this while openly recognizing and stating publicly that such zoning applications to residential areas pose significant risk and significant degradation of the quality of those neighborhoods. In many conversations and in many discussions on the record at council meetings, there have been discussions about the increase in taxation that would be required and the degradation and the loss in values for the residential properties in these neighborhoods. Councilwoman Henley expressed significant concerns in your September meeting about the safety of properties, the ability of the city to enforce regulations, and she asked an interesting question that I remembered from listening to that meeting. She wanted to know what the council thought about the importance of getting input from the residents in those neighborhoods. And nobody responded to her question of the other members of the council. I thought that was significant, that there was no response to her question. I think that spoke volumes to the level of intent from the City Council, and it's a very big concern from my point of view. U.S. City Council leaders are charged with representing the interests of those who elected you to serve the city. By your own words and admissions, you recognize that short-term rentals are a serious problem that are not managed acceptably, and recognize that these overlay districts, while solving the conditional use permit requirement challenge that the city faces, do not do anything to solve the challenge of short-term rentals fundamentally. U.S. City Council leadership have not provided reasonable notice or input to the residents of Ocean Park. of Ocean Park that face this dramatic change. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Daniel, the next speaker is Daniel Murphy. And after Mr. Murphy is Lee Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Daniel Murphy. I am the vice president of the Ocean Park Civic League, and I come to unite to indicate how the stance of the civic league has been. I would like to take this opportunity for all of my Ocean Park residents to please stand at this time. I hope you are starting to feel what's going on here because it's become quite evident that we are not happy with this. I will try to stay clinical in my diagnosis of this and how we should proceed, but I will tell you this. In finding out about the short-term overlay, we tallied and went to social media at first and did a couple of surveys on both Facebook and Nextdoor to see what the residents were, if they were in favor or opposed to it. We had nearly a 90% opposition to it. From that, we then held a meeting on October the 8th, and a resolution was put forward to oppose Ocean Park being included in the overlay, which was unanimously and unequivocally approved. I think it is evident that there are a number of reasons why. These will be detailed and delineated by a lot of the residents that are going to speak after me, so I'm not going to go through all the things. I will say the one thing. I understand that the process of doing the conditional use permits is arduous and difficult, but what you're taking away by doing that is you're giving the people that are most impacted by those decisions an opportunity not to comment. So you're taking that away from them, and we really strongly feel as a community, as a civic league, that that is inappropriate, and we're asking you to remove Ocean Park from the overlay for short-term rentals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lee Atkins. And after Mr. Atkins will be Barbara Messner.
City Council members, something written down, and I was going to read, but I'm not going to do that. I think it's pretty obvious what's going on. You guys, I've got a property coming up, Shadow Long Villas 2. It's on Mediterranean, the corner of Pinewood and Mediterranean. It's almost like you guys want to keep the neighborhoods, right? You're saying that you're making these overlays, but you're pushing it out of the resort area at the beach, and you're pushing it down Shore Drives in these neighborhoods that are all pretty much residential neighborhoods. And I thought that was what you guys were trying to stop. My property is zoned RT3. That's what most of the hotels are zoned, resort tours, and it's not a residential. I sit one block outside of this magical line. I don't think that's right. It's zoned, it's an existing hotel. It was a hotel. It's been short-term rentals. If someone wants to buy us all out, it can be a hotel again. It's zoned RT3. It's right outside. It's one block outside of the line. You hear a lot about the noise, the problems of the short-term rentals. We have ring doorbells. We have decimal rears. We are covering every aspect of that. A lot of people are. The rush, I thought it was like November 2019, we had a bunch of stuff in line. We had rules. We had a plan. There's been a pandemic. Everything's kind of been stifled, and yet everything's been changed multiple times, and this is another proposed change. I just figure if we rush, or if the council rushes or planning rushes, there's going to be mistakes that are going to be made. There's a lot of people that don't want this in their area. There's a lot of people who do want this to be in certain areas. I know it's a troublesome assignment. It's a big task for you guys to take, but I really think that if we take our time and do it smart and do some studies or do something on it, try to figure it out the right way, I think there's better ways to look at these short-term rentals. But I myself, my family's short-term rental, which actually comes up through planning in November, is a block outside, but it's not zoned residential. It's zoned RT3. I think the RT3, there's only a couple that are outside because of their age and they're so old. I think they need to be included in the OR. I don't think you should be able to cut out a few, it could be a future hotel there. I don't think you should cut that out for short-term rentals. We pay a lot of taxes. We help the city out. The military's here. You've got the resort here. I don't think Shore Drive's a resort area. It could be. Some people might think it is, but the oceanfront's a resort area. I think it should stay.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
The next speaker is...
I'm sorry. Mr. Atkins, would you mind? I'd like to ask you a question. So you said your place used to be a hotel?
A long time ago, yes, ma'am. And then, and it's hard to change the dynamic of the hotel. There's no washer and dryer in them. Every single one of them are identical. It's an old hotel.
And how many units are there?
16.
And are there single-family homes around you?
There are, to the west, there are apartments. To the south, there's a brewery of 50 feet, Tad's Deli, Pizza Chapel, Ice House, and there are duplexes beside mine. And down the street on Pinewood, there are single-family homes. Yes, ma'am, there are single-family homes.
So it sounds fairly commercial.
Absolutely. You can hear the music all night long from the club. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. It's right on the corner of all the action. It's where the old wave-riding vehicles used to be. That was one of the old, original shopping areas, and that was an old, existing motel. And it's still zoned RT3, so it could still be purchased, and someone could still put a hotel up.
So the duplex is next to you. Do you know what its zoning is?
I'm sure they're probably zoned residential. I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure they would be zoned residential, but I'm not positive.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Nancy Parker.
Wish I would put the ordinances in the back and the planning in the front, especially when you have this many people coming to speak. I learn a lot from these speakers, and I learned a lot from George Mintz when he spoke against the Arena Project. He talked about evacuation and how dangerous it was to keep building around the oceanfront. Some people live near a hotel or, you know, a commercial property because the rent is cheap. It doesn't mean that their lives and their peaceful enjoyment should be different from somebody else.
Folks in the gallery, if we can, you know, please curtail conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, I learn a lot from these people. I wish, you know, more people had woken up before it got this bad and different people had run for office and, you know, helped with other people's problems. I oppose all of these overlays, and, you know, Sandbridge, they fought for five years, and then you decided to make everything commercial. But it is, it's impossible. If people want to know what the problems are with their law enforcement, they need to look at the August 8, 8/8/2017 informal, and there's been a problem. Our ex-police chief told you all he had problems retaining and keeping officers. You can't have them doing all kinds of, you know, adding to their workload and turning these neighborhoods into rental properties. The gridlock alone at the oceanfront is a nightmare, and you're adding to it. I hope these people will look at the agenda for planning next week. That's kind of rushed through, too. There's no end to this. There's a supermajority, 7-2 vote. Lynn Haven District Rep. has resort investments at the oceanfront. Mr. Jones has financed resort, or Bayside, and Mr. Tower has conflicts. A lot of y'all have conflicts, and you shouldn't be forcing this on the neighborhoods. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Parker. And after Ms. Parker is Jay Boone. And after Ms. Parker is Jay Boone.
Welcome.
Do you want me to leave this on or take it off? Dear Mayor and members of City Council, the issue of short-term rentals has been exhausting to all, and one can appreciate the desire of council to find a means to address these business entities. It's always the details which cause problems if different perspectives are not clarified at the beginning, so all know what the guidelines say and mean. With that, several questions come to mind. Section 2301B states that 60% of the owners of the properties in the community may petition for a short-term rental overlay district. Question: If a person owns several properties, do they receive account for each property? This may manifest itself in the form of separate lots or in the form of a single lot with several units, such as apartment or duplex, on a single lot but different mailing addresses. Section 2300 of the proposal alludes to the importance of neighborhood tranquility and cohesiveness in the neighborhood in the decision process. It needs to be recognized that investors and owners living on a golden pond outside of the community, whether in China, Norfolk, or Kempsville, will have a very different attitude than someone who lives, works, is raising a family, or is retired in that residential neighborhood, should outside investors play a part in the decision that will profoundly impact the residential community. When a proposal is to change a community to a short-term overlay district is being considered, there needs to be a format to inform all residents who will be impacted via mailing or other means with all documents and signatures being traceable and verifiable. The question is, by who? Very conscious decisions should be made on these aspects of the proposal, as there can be irreversible, unlimited consequences, and very unintended. Again, the bar to change any neighborhood to a short-term rental district should be high, and the stretch should be long, as there is no going back, and the lives of those that live there will be profoundly changed. I wish to believe these proposals are for the protection of your residential neighborhoods and will not be used to undermine them. I borrow from a well-known proverb, "Do unto others what you would have done next door to you and to your neighbors." That should be our guiding compass. And I thank you for your time and consideration in these deliberations. It's like Solomon trying to divide the babies. Good luck. Thank you.
And after Ms. Boone is Courtney Farr.
Welcome back.
I appreciate everyone that came out from the community, because it is useful hearing from people that actually live in, I guess, the situation that's being, you know, put upon them. I understand. I feel like if a community has guidelines and a person moves into that community under those guidelines, then, and the community supports, like, once a decision as tonight, then that's something that should be looked at. I feel like as a homeowner yourself, yes, you have a right, but your right shouldn't infringe on anyone else as well. So it's kind of a give and take. I think the city has kind of put themselves into this bind by not looking at other options again to spread the wealth out. They're only looking at the coastal line of Virginia Beach as basically all we have to offer tourists. It's kind of sad, because there's lots of other things in the city as well that can attract people, but right now, the focus is the coastline. So as we push out the oceanfront and try to include all these other areas and make them resort areas, you're just going to have situations like this, because people, when they moved into those homes, they didn't expect to have these situations occur. Again, I do think that it's the right of the people, but in a situation like this where basically the entire community has come out and said, "No, I don't want this," then there's something that needs to be looked at. And then just going forward, I think, maybe looking at, obviously, the other areas that are available in Virginia Beach so that citizens do have the option, if they want to, to get that extra income from their residence and from properties that they own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney? Courtney Farr. And then, Mayor, the remaining speakers will be via WebEx.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Courtney Farr, and I live in the Ocean Park neighborhood in Virginia Beach. I chose this neighborhood over 10 years ago because of the wonderful quality of daily life it would bring for myself and the family I wanted to make and grow there. Close proximity to the beautiful bay, top-notch school districts, walking distance to parks and restaurants. We love our neighbors, the afternoon playdates, and beach meetups with people we know and We want our, sorry, it's a little emotional, our five-year-old son Graham to look outside and see friends and neighbors that he can build relationships with over time and not have a transient, roll-in, roll-out environment with no neighborly feel. Our civic league is very active in events and get-togethers, times we cherish. We've put roots down here, paid taxes here. We want the quality of life for ourselves, our neighbors, to go on being there for us for years to come. In closing, I'm opposed to allowing short-term rentals in Ocean Park for these reasons. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tanya Tiversky, and she will be participating via WebEx. Mr. Tiversky, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Dyer and Councilmembers. I'm here to speak about the Jones Wood proposal on the North End overlay. My name is Tanya Tiversky, and I live at 220 Cavalier Drive. This is a summary of a letter I sent to everyone yesterday, and I'm here today to ask you to include my home in Cavalier Shores in the North End overlay. It was not until two years ago that I realized and understand the true value of a short-term rental. Three of our parents needed care. One was 94, one had Alzheimer's, and one had stage IV cancer, and I knew I'd be away from my home for a while. But it's not just this one incident that makes it so critical to become part of the North End overlay. Job loss, illness, accidents, death, divorce, happens to all of us, and having this right would allow me to rent my home as a short-term rental for just a few weeks a year and still have it remain my full-time primary residence. I live in Cavalier Shores. We are part of the resort area. We're right in front of everything. We are the only part not included in the North End overlay. I can see the new Marriott and Orion's, new signs, and the soon-to-be-built Third Hotel and Convention Center from my porch and my bedroom. There is auto, foot, bike, hotel, and shuttle traffic into the night. Thursday through Sunday evenings, we can hear the music from the lawn of the Cavalier. There has been major construction going on for over five years. There is the constant beeping from construction trucks from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and we are directly under the jet plane landing path. We hear jets fly all day, sometimes beyond 9:00 p.m. I'm not complaining, because personally, I love the action. I'm just describing the atmosphere at this part of the North End. Cavalier Shores... Cavalier Shores is a natural transition. We would, we should not be jumped over. To not include us in the overlay would be changing our 95-year history. Our neighborhood Cavalier Shores was designed to be an extension and part of the Cavalier Hotel. In 1927, the owners, in conjunction with the investors, planned an adjacent development named Cavalier Shores to complement their resort development. It only, it was the only luxury resort to ask to offer amenities to the neighbors. According to the same source, Cavalier Shores currently and historically has offered short and long-term rentals. Currently, there are 38 outbuildings that include living space that allow property owners a way to facilitate visits from friends and family, as well as profit from short and long-term rentals. There is evidence dating back to this from 1928, and this is from the Cavalier-
Appreciate it.
Lushy, Lushy. If you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, please. Can you unmute both of them, please?
Hi, I'm here. Hello?
Comments, please. Go ahead. Comments, please.
Can you guys? We're Croatan homeowners. We love our neighbors and respect the right of peaceful and quiet enjoyment of their property. We fully agree with current rules and regulations of no more than two rentals per week and room and parking requirements. We are disturbed, however, by the proposed changes that might become law in Virginia Beach. We are pleading the following to you: Please allow Croatan homeowners to retain the ability to apply for STR use of their home through the conditional use permit application process. Please do not set laws on cap expiration after five years. We would love to obtain and keep in perpetuity the right of renting weekly, assuming we follow the law, and assure the right of quiet and peaceful enjoyment for our neighbors. We ask the above because we believe blanket banning of STR across entire neighborhood in the case of Croatan is discriminatory against second homeowners, but may affect also year-round owners upon likely changes of their life circumstances. Croatan has always been a neighborhood with a healthy mix of vacation, second homes, as well as year-round residents. As a matter of fact, we first rented here, then we bought a vacation home. All we ask is the right to apply for a permit and run our homes according to the existing laws. Putting a blanket ban would strip us from our legitimate right to full use of our home. Please do not strip further our rights and limit control of our homeownership. It is good for everyone, including the year-round homeowners, that people from all over the country and Canada have the opportunity to vacation in this beautiful place and see Croatan. So many of them fall in love with it, like us, and buy their second on-vacation or retirement homes here. Limiting the ability for new STR while you have some house with an STR in Croatan is already deeply affecting the real estate market for the worse by creating artificially winners and losers. The houses with STRs are flying off the market. The rest of them are lingering. Banning us from being able to apply for an STR is not good for the city and its residents. It is, as it will drastically cut business for Virginia Beach residents and other hospitality businesses, like restaurants, amusement, insurance, et cetera. We estimate at least 10 people per house make a steady and reliable stream of income from each such home. My home will be empty, and no cleaning or regular maintenance people will make any income out of it. And all those potential guests will move home to North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Georgia, et cetera. Not everyone can afford a hotel, nor can everyone prefer to stay in a hotel necessarily. Now it is not the time for the city to shoo away your potential tourist revenue, nor it will ever be. We're hoping city will find a middle-of-the-road solution to reconcile the rights of everyone, be it year-round or vacation homeowners. The city can and should focus on ensuring the right for peaceful enjoyment of people's homes by enforcing the existing laws and ordinances, and not by limiting or stripping homeowners' rights and ability to enjoy the use of their home as they see fit in accordance with the existing laws.
The next speaker is David Unger. Mr. Unger, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. So that's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, great. And I want to thank everybody for their, what I believe is very compelling, you know, argument.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This overlay district proposal is something that I proposed back when we were trying to resolve the issue of short-term rentals two years ago. In my view, we never did satisfactorily resolve the issue of short-term rentals in the city of Virginia Beach. My concern has, is now, and always has been, the impact that short-term rentals are going to have on the residential communities of Virginia Beach. The single-family residential communities of Virginia Beach. I have emotionally and theoretically been opposed to short-term rentals in Virginia Beach because of the impact on the neighborhoods. The interesting thing is, is that tonight, because the, the issue has been brought to a head in the proposal that we had before the City Council for creating overlay districts and allowing short-term rentals that conform to the rules and regulations that would be set forth in certain areas of the city, now we suddenly get a response from at least Ocean Park area that they're opposed to short-term rentals. And as I said to the Bay Area Advisory Commission meeting that was mentioned by one of the speakers the other night, over the course of this entire discussion of short-term rentals, I never received a call from anybody in Ocean Park who was opposed to short-term rentals. In fact, I got a letter from the president of the Civic League telling me that they didn't oppose short-term rentals in Ocean Park. So I think it's interesting now that the prospect of it happening in Ocean Park and some other parts of the city, and the reality is starting to set in, that it could possibly happen, that all of a sudden, everybody's starting to pay attention. And I'm glad to see that, because that, the attention that it's finally getting, and the opposition that short-term rentals are finally getting, coincide with my personal belief that there are danger and a deterioration to the community of Virginia Beach, or at least the single-family neighborhoods of Virginia Beach. For that reason, I'm going to follow the wishes of the people in Ocean Park, and I'm going to remove the Ocean Park overlay from this ordinance. I haven't finished yet. Removing Ocean Park from the overlay, overlay from the ordinance, or the referral of the ordinance, only removes Ocean Park as an area whereby short-term rentals could be applied basically by right. It doesn't change what's going to happen in the, in the oceanfront overlay, and it doesn't change what's going to happen in the Cape Story overlay. And it does, at least for the time being, because I'm not going to try to remove it, it leaves the clause in the proposed ordinance that in five years, short-term rentals outside of the whatever overlays are approved, would go out of existence. So having said all of that and explained my position on it, I'm going to move approval of the, to, of the ordinance to refer the odd matter to the Planning Commission with the removal of Ocean Park overlay from the ordinance.
We, we have a motion, a second. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rouse, then Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have concerns with creating overlay districts throughout our city. I think, you know, it's very important that we, we protect the, the nature of a community, so to speak, when it comes to our, when it comes to our city. But I'm afraid I'm not totally sold on overlay districts because of the balance or the unbalance it may create. There are people that, within our city, who use their primary residence as another means of, of income, and that is very, very important when you understand where we are in the midst of this economy, where we are amidst this COVID pandemic, while also understanding where we are in Virginia Beach, especially hospitality industry that we, we have here. And so there aren't a lot of high-paying jobs, so there are people who, who tend to rent their, their homes out to make ends meet. The other thing I'm concerned with is, you know, as one of the callers had called in and stated, you know, certain, some people have properties where they can bring in their, their parents and elderly, and keep a close eye on them and watch them. There are also those who would be empty nesters, who want to, who maybe put their kids to school and want to travel, you know, and, and make extra income because social security or, or their benefits or retirement packages aren't, aren't necessarily holding up the, the end of their life that they're seeking. So then there's the, the case of byright use from, from property owners. I, I'm just really hesitant in putting in overlay districts where you, you take property owners' rights away from them, that are not in the necessary overlay, but outside overlay, and who may have been renting their property responsibly, doing so with the consent and respect of their neighbors. And now, all of a sudden, to create this overlay district, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant of that. So if I can, if someone can provide me more clarity on grandfathering in, and those who have been, who may be outside of the overlay district, who've been doing everything they need to do responsibly to, to manage a STR, what is the recourse, what, what they have?
Okay, Ms. Abbott, Ms. Henley, and then Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. At first, I want to say thank you to the variety of council members that have added input to this ordinance. I know it's, it's been a challenging topic, and I think there's no shortage of opinions on this board over how this ends up and shakes out in the end. I am reluctant on some of the items on this. I have some concerns similar to what Councilman Rouse stated about the grandfathering and the conditional use permits that we've already granted running out, and I think there's still a lot more work that needs to be done on that component. I'm going to support the referral to Planning Commission, but I do think we have, as Ms. Parker said, the, the devil's in the details, and I, I would like us to continue the conversation even while this is in planning, because I think it's important that we continue robust discussion, and as was mentioned in a lot of the comments tonight, try to get ahead and start doing public engagement now. Mr. Duhaney, I don't know if we can have our communications department start looking at some creative ways to work around the COVID situation and trying to make sure that we're adequately taking a pulse of not only the overlay, potential overlay areas, but just the, the pulse of the city in general. On a separate note, Mr. City Manager, also, I'm interested in, in learning more. One of the comments that was made at length today was about the covenances that some neighborhoods have, and I, I'd like to get more education on why we don't take those things into consideration and, and what the, the logic behind that is, and that's definitely something, obviously, for another day, but I just wanted to share my overall remarks and some thoughts, but I do hope we continue the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley, and then Ms. Wilson.
Well, obviously, I've been voting against all of the short-term rentals, because I think the ordinance that the council passed went way too far. We had worked for a very long time to try to find something that was a reasonable compromise, but at the end, all of that work went out the window, and everything but the kitchen sink got thrown into the ordinance, and I've just not been able to support it, because it does need to be fixed. And in order to get it fixed, we have to have it come, a recommendation come from the Planning Commission. So something has got to go back to the Planning Commission in order to open this up so that we can try to fix it. I was very concerned during all the time that this thing was adopted, was that if we went too far, we would be conveying rights that would then be difficult to take away. And I think we have that confronting us. I think that's going to be a difficulty, and that's one reason that I did not believe that just because it was on the books, we had to go ahead and let people get these, these STRs, because I think we have conveyed things that we shouldn't have, and I think it's going to perhaps be difficult if we want to take some of those things back. But we need to, to do a better job than we did with STRs, and in order to do that, like I say, we've got to get it back to the Planning Commission first, and then it comes to the council. I do not think overlays should be conveyed on a neighborhood unless the neighborhood asks for it. I don't care what it is. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry that the General Assembly stepped in and conveyed byright STRs at Sandbridge. And I think it was unfortunate that when we did it before, the rest of the city kept saying, "Oh, well, Sandbridge is different." No, there were a residential community too, and they should not have had them conveyed byright without their asking for it. But the General Assembly did that, and that's that. But we do have the responsibility to make the, the regulations reasonable, and that will be citywide. We also have the responsibility to provide for enforcement of those regulations. We haven't done that yet. I know that the Planning Department is working on it and has come up with some good recommendations, because we should not adopt anything if we can't enforce it. So that's something else we need to fix. I've also been very concerned that we didn't have any safety regulations, and if you notice, one of these ordinances will do that. So that one, I'm certainly in favor of, and it might be even refined some more. I'm extremely glad to hear Mr. Jones agree to take Ocean Park out. I wish you all had been here two years ago. Maybe we wouldn't be in the fix we're in now with what we've got, but you've come out, and I don't think you should have to do it again, and I'm so glad that we're taking Ocean Park out of this. I assume that will also take out Ares by the Bay. Ares by the Bay is in Ocean Park, and that will come out?
It's in the overlay.
Because I do think that we need to look at this question of when a homeowners association or when there's a condo association and in their covenants, they are not allowed. We shouldn't be conveying something that they don't allow, because I think they're right. They've opened up themselves to some legal action, and we, we don't need to do that. In other words, we have got a lot of work to do. But this action will allow us to begin that. I think the fact that we have finally realized that short-term rentals can be a great problem, and we need to be concerned about it for everybody all over the city, and so we're Something came to my mind and then went out again. We've got a lot of work to do, but I, I do, oh, and I do think that there are probably situations that we should be able to allow short-term rentals. I'm not saying I'm totally against them. I'm just saying that I think we made it much too broad. You know, we did allow home sharing by right. I haven't heard any problem with that. We might want to look at a, a very tight allowance of a primary residence to be used under certain very controlled circumstances for a short-term rental. That might be something we want to consider. I think we really need to look at this and look at it carefully, but make a very strong case that it can't be something that we can enforce, and it's got to be something that is reasonable. And we certainly need to listen to the neighbors and make sure we're not opening the door to ruining a perfectly good residential neighborhood again. And so I am going to be supporting sending these back to the Planning Commission with Mr. Jones' recommendation that Ocean Park comes out, just because we need to get it back on the table. And I hope all of you will stay involved. Even though Ocean Park's out now, you better still watch it. But everybody needs to be involved from every neighborhood in the city. We want to do it right the next time. We messed it up the first time. We get another chance, but we got to do it right.
Ms. Wilson.
I like my colleagues. Thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. We have been working on short-term rentals for five years, or longer, Barbara. And this has been one of the toughest things because one thing is, we're not a cookie-cutter city. I mean, there's so many unique parts to our city, it's hard to make rules to fit everything because it just doesn't work that way. I would like to thank Mr. Jones for pulling out the Western Shore Drive. I think that was absolutely the right thing to do, and I, I really appreciate that. And, and thank you for coming out and telling us how you feel. I'm going to support this. I don't agree with everything in it. I have some concerns about some things. And I, I did, and I'm not going to push this on anybody, but we did have another map for the North End, because it looks like some streets might have been left out. And so I would just kind of like to ask, when the Planning Commission looks at this to see, to include, I think that's like 45th to 49th Street, the Hollies, not Cavalier Shores, but the Hollies is an extension of the North End, if they would look at that. And then also to look at, there might be some commercial areas, and maybe it's the zoning, like Mr. Atkins that came back. And I'm not sure what his property is rated. I know Dolphin Run was originally built as a hotel and then became condos. And I know this because I, I'm in real estate, and it's listed as a, to be able to get a loan, is a condo hotel. And it's been doing short-term rentals since the 70s. And it actually doesn't fit into, to our mold. They had three-bedroom units with one parking spot. And there's no way they can get three parking spots. And you, I don't think you can take that away from these folks that have been doing short-term rentals since the 70s. So I'd like for us to sort of dig deeper into our uniqueness of our city and the different types of properties that we have. And maybe there's some way to make allowances for the ones that should be, like, like Ms. Henley was talking about. Oceans Two was built as a hotel. And now they're like little 500-square-foot mini condos. So, you know, maybe that's a condo hotel as well. So I just would like to add on to what you've done, and, and I, I know that the three councilmen have worked really, really hard on this. This is a tough issue because there's so many different competing interests. But maybe we can just dig a little bit deeper with the Planning Commission. There's some very wise people there. And to look at some of these other issues as we go forward. And I just want to thank everybody in this room for what you've done.
Thank you. Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to prolong this. I know it's been a long night. I just wanted to echo the, a couple of things. I think Ms. Henley's really sort of summed it up. We, we need to make sure that we've got regulations that are enforceable, because if we don't, we're, we're shouting in a, in a void. Anything we do is not, not going to be meaningful. So that's an important part of what we have to do. The referral to the Planning Commission, I want to make clear if anybody's listening or watching, that's not just to the Planning Commission. That's for public hearings before the Planning Commission as well. It's not simply for the Planning Commission to consider. There will be public hearings conducted by the Planning Commission. I urge people that have an interest in it to make those, their interests known to the Planning Commission. You will also have another opportunity to make your interest known to City Council, but I would not, when that comes back from the Planning Commission, in whatever condition it comes back. But I would not wait for that. I would let the Planning, share with the Planning Commission your thoughts on this so we can get the very best. I too thank all the people that have participated so far, and I encourage others to do so. On the, on the, on the oceanfront district, there have been suggestions, including the most recent one that Ms. Wilson referred to, about adding to, Mr. Atkins made a suggestion that his property should be also added to. I've told a number of people that I thought the way to get this thing started was with a clear demarcation of the OR district, which is a hotel zone, but there are private residences and you can build things in there. I'm not wedded to that. If there is a strong movement to add other areas to it, I'm certainly willing to consider it. I'm very open-minded about it, just for anybody that's interested in the oceanfront area. But I started with the OR because I thought that's not your typical neighborhood where people have invested knowing that they, or feeling that they're protected from having any kind of rental activity on a short-term basis near them, because the, most areas within the OR already, already have that kind of activity, either, either in existing STRs or in the hotels that are very near as well. So thanks to all of you for coming out. Those who didn't come out but are interested in this, follow the, this to the Planning Commission and back to council. We're going to keep working on this till we get it right. It is a struggle. There are many, many equities for both short-term rentals for the city. It does, someone said it doesn't produce any taxes. That's simply not true. It does produce a lot of taxes directly and indirectly in short-term rentals. They, they are, that's undeniable. That does not mean that you want to have one next door to you. I understand that. The golden rule that Ms. Parker suggests is one that I try to keep in mind, too. But it is a balance of equities. We are in a resort community. We, as Ms. Wilson said, I think we are. We have a lot of different areas. There is no perfect answer, but we will, we will work and get the very best answer we can. Thank you to everyone who's participated in that, including our planning staff, who I know is working awfully hard on this. Thanks.
Ms. Wooton.
Thank you. I just want to say really quickly, I, I do appreciate the work that the, the council members who sponsored this resolution have, have done. As this is, as already been mentioned, a very intricate and challenging issue. However, I would like to bring attention to the five-year sunset for the STRs, especially if they're following all the guidelines and the rules. I, I do think that we need to give further consideration to, to that specification in this resolution. Have been, several people have reached out to me saying how they don't agree with that, and I've heard it mentioned tonight as well. So I would really like to see if there's a way that we can change that sunset rule. Then the other aspect is, I do agree with the community engagement. I think that's very important, has been said here tonight by many of the residents. We certainly do appreciate your input, and I certainly would like to hear more, and would like to make sure we include more community engagement in this matter going forward. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Me.
Oh, okay. Yes.
I apologize. Councilmember Moss would like to make comment, please. Mr. Moss, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll probably hear a phone in the background, but I think the residents made the best case with examples of what Councilman Jones spoke to with regards to, under our existing zoning that has been in place since going back to the days that the city became a city of Virginia Beach, short-term rentals have never been a by right use. They're not a by right use in the zoning ordinances today. It's only out of government's past and futures not enforcing them, and they were in historical places, but it was never a by right use. I've had this discussion, another of the city attorney has educated us all that. So when people say that if we make a change, we're taking someone's property rights away, the property right never existed to start with. I think that's what you heard from the people from Ocean Parks and Ares. They buy homes, they buy them with the zonings. They have an expectation of what's going to happen. And then there's a change. Well, yeah, they ought to have a chance, Ms. Henley was correct, they ought to have a chance to speak up about that and say if they want to change their neighborhood. So I think that Mr. Jones is correct when he says, you know, maybe resorts, these places where they've always been, that's the standard practice, but they haven't always been in Homestead, in Green Rock, in Bay Lake Pines, you name the neighborhood. And, and because someone got a conditional use permit for five years, well, it says it's only for five years. There's no expectation, and there's no requirement of the city to extend those. So I think we need to make sure that when we say that people had a right, they had a right for five years. Now, there are people who were grandfathered when we did that ordinance back when, recognize people who were actively doing STRs before we made that change. As long as they continue to do those, they are grandfathered. But a conditional use permit has a life. And if you're not in an overlay district, then I don't think it's, people haven't been disenfranchised of a vested legal right if it's not renewed. And, and unless that neighborhood wants and has petitioned to become an overlay district, why should we be reauthorizing that when the community hasn't responded? So I think, I think the ordinance as it is, it's good to go to the Planning Commission. I appreciate what Mr. Jones did. I hope all the people who spoke out tonight reach out to all their friends who live in other neighborhoods and do their own groundswell education to know that this is a big fundamental issue in front of us. And enforcement is key. But I, I think it's important that when people say we are, the council is taking a right away, the right really has never legally existed. And with the exception of Sandbridge, as Ms. Henley mentioned, the General Assembly, there is no vested legal right to short-term rentals in the city's current residential zoning ordinances. I look forward to the Planning Commission. I hope they hold meetings out in the field, or Zoom meetings for Bayside, Zoom meetings for different districts, so that we make sure that everybody knows. And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it may well be that the water, the Community Services bill, that insert that we always get lots of information, maybe they can update that insert to include something in there about the whole issue with short-term rentals, because everybody gets, well, most people get a Community Services monthly bill, and we could put that insert in there for a couple months in a row so people would know that this issue is going on. That would be a great way of hitting every property. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Boss, okay, anyone else? But once again, I want to echo what a lot of people said, but also, you know, be assured that you were heard tonight, without doubt, question or reservation. And think about it with mutual exchange and civility. You know, I think a greater good was accomplished. I agree with Todd Solomon that, you know, civil dialogue and exchange is important going forward. And Mrs. Henley is also tied in, working with community engagement on the infill project with Mr. Rouse. And I think what we're looking for here, and I'm going to support sending it to the Planning Commission, and hearken back to what Mr. Rouse said, you know, we have to find that balance, that, you know, hopefully create that win-win situation going forward. But once again, I just want to thank everybody and, you know, thank everybody for coming. And I think at this point, Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Mayor, just clarification. The motion and the second was to, as amended, to remove, to remove the West Shore Drive District. Is that, thank you. And also, are we including F. in this vote as well? Thank you.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify before we begin the vote. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Verlucis Abbott. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? Senator Moss?
Been a problem with the, he's saying there's no longer, I just got a text from him saying he's no longer receiving the audio. We may have to restart this.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes, the audio has returned.
Councilmember? Councilmember Moss?
The audio has returned. I'll send you a text.
Need your vote, please.
Send you a text.
Verbal vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Let me try Mr. Moss one more time. Councilmember Moss, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
Ten to zero, approve the resolution as amended.
All right, moving along. Madam Clerk, what times the dominoes get here? Okay. All right, I guess we're under 18 now, and that would be item A.
Eighteen, A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Okay.
So we have, are we calling them all at once, or they're, they're separate?
Yeah, let's call them all at once.
Okay.
And then they can identify what they're speaking to.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening. I have a question. It's
So we have, are we calling them all at once, or they're separate?
Yeah, let's call them all at once. And then they can identify what they're speaking to.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening. I have a question, it's really confusing the way this is jumping around. I had signed up to speak on item five, and I thought y'all voted, but this, you know, pulling and not pulling, have you voted or not on consent agenda on item five, the short-term rental?
We're not in planning yet, Ms. Messner.
Okay, I know, it's a lot of things tonight. Okay, so which item is this?
Eighteen.
Eighteen A?
Eighteen A.
All right.
It's all of eighteen, anything in the categories that were coming.
Okay, eighteen. Twenty-nine thousand, Department of Forestry, Parks and Recreation, operating budget and authorize local match tree planning review, update, update urban forest management. You know, it's almost unimaginable that you want to plant trees after you've been filling in wetlands, marshland, and an entire acre of woodlands for the arena slash sports center slash et cetera. And, you know, those votes were really interesting. You asked me to stay on this topic, so I will, but I think it's important to note how concerned y'all were, and when you, you said that people hadn't been speaking out. I've been speaking out on hundreds of these, and a lot of people from Ocean Park were involved with, they were part of the Sandbridge group, they have spoken out. Their voices just weren't heard, and I think the elections have a little something to do with it, and I think we do need better notification on everything that's going on. You've been talking about civic engagement, Todd Solomon started that. I just happen to have one ready, but a lot of people are conveniently concerned, and people are already voting, so. Yeah, I just think it's insane to be planting trees as you destroy them, and there was something on the news about a shortage of wood and lumber. Part of that's all these signs, I wish somebody could discuss not having so many giant signs all over the roadway at election time. Is that the only thing for now?
B. B is in void.
Pardon?
Eighteen B.
Okay. Thirty-six thousand from Department of Criminal Justice Services, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, police operating budget, purchase of sanitizing equipment. Why hasn't that been in the budget? Like I said, I watched, I listened to some of the budget and finance earlier, and I strongly disapprove of the way you handle the financing and create debt, okay? C, forty-eight thousand from Department of DMV, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, police department operating budget, and authorize fifty percent in-kind match rate overtime related to the enforcement of DUI laws. If you hadn't approved and spent four million dollars on these breweries and have alcohol delivered, we wouldn't have so many DUIs. The stats by one of the TV station are unbelievable, and our police are overworked, air firemen, and I think it would have been nice at the beginning to say a prayer for Art Khan, you know, who was injured in the accident. I don't think anyone's mentioned that on the record, so, you know, air prayers are with him for, you know, recovery. Now, DUI laws, the marketing, the advertising, publications, tourism for alcohol, it's not what we should, we should have. I mean, the police can't keep up. It's like pouring people out on the roads that have been drinking, the breweries do not even have to serve food. You let them have food now, but they don't even have to serve food, and you approved every brewery. Most of y'all approved all of them. Okay, that's C. Is there anything else, or is that it?
D.
C, D. Okay. I can't imagine if I had two hundred and fifty-three pages, it's hard keeping up with just eight. Well, some of us try, obviously not enough, because, you know, Ms. Henley, you know, said she wished some of these people had been here sooner. Enough people have been here. If one person says the right thing, y'all should listen. Forty-eight thousand, two hundred from DMV, you did say D, Department of Motor Vehicles, fifty percent in-kind match overtime related to enforcement of seatbelt laws. Okay. Like I said, we have a budget. You know, you want more money. Okay, C, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and Mr. Moss, who's not here, he would usually speak on some of these things, but he doesn't have to right now. Two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five, Homeland Security, police operating budget transfer, that's almost a third of a million within police operating budget, local grant match marine patrol equipment. It isn't just the equipment, it isn't just the money, it's letting them enforce the laws and not having uncontrolled growth and events all the time, it's the workload. And if anybody watched, and I hope they will watch, the informal, using, trying to transfer COVID money, you know, which you've already voted on, to pay salaries. The money should be for everyone's salary, and I do support all first responders. Okay. Is there another one? Amanda?
F.
F, okay. Forty-nine thousand, Homeland Security, police operating budget, law enforcement equipment. We need more and more equipment, and in twenty-eighteen, the twenty-eighteen budget, the police, the firemen, everyone begged you for better pay and benefits, and, you know, the alternative budget was only seven million new debt. You could have taken billions out. The money is going to the wrong places. You shouldn't be, you know, having to find money to pay for things that should be number one priority, which is public safety. Okay.
And H, it's the last one, Ms. Messner.
H?
Yes, ma'am.
Seventy thousand, nine ninety-one, almost eighty thousand, grant, community corrections, pre-trial services, law enforcement purposes. Like I said, law enforcement, back to nineteen ninety-nine, when William Bailey was there, you know, pleading for more manpower on the fire trucks and everything, these issues have been out there forever, they just have not been taken care of, and the COVID should be temporary, and if it was handled properly, we wouldn't be having these problems. Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Boone. Ms. Boone has signed up on eighteen A, B, C, D, E, F, and H. Ms. Boone, would you like for me to repeat those items?
Yes.
Sure. Eighteen A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
I don't want to speak on the A.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So you can start with eighteen B. Thank you.
B is for thirty-six thousand for the purchase of sanitizing equipment. Basically, when we're at protests, many of them have been in Virginia Beach, and I know for a fact that the police don't wear masks, they don't care about distancing themselves from us, they're all touching us, feeling, like, touching us and everything, and I'm just, it's wonder that you need thirty-six thousand dollars to sanitize equipment when you don't even care about making sure that we're safe in the streets when you're interacting with us. So I think that that's kind of a lost thing, and I just feel like that just doesn't need to be looked at, we can look at, in putting the money into something else. Again, with C as well, forty-eight thousand for overtime enforcement of DUI laws. This one and the one following it with D, together it's almost a hundred thousand dollars basically for overtime and enforcement of laws, basically the DUI and also the seatbelt laws. For me, I know that unless it's changed, the Virginia statute says that you can't be pulled over for a seatbelt violation, so I'm just not understanding where, like, the overtime would come to be related specifically to seatbelt laws. DUI, I can understand, even though I feel like that is also in a way to just entrap people, I feel like there's a reason why these are usually set up, usually like the DUI checkpoints and things like that, it's said to help the community. In all actuality, they're usually set up around holidays and also, like, end-of-month times, so where you can meet quotas and you can do other things. So I also feel like with these both coming from the DMV, this is almost kind of like quid, quid pro quo, or whatever that's called, when it's like you give something, you get something, it almost feels like that, you know, the DMV is basically paying law enforcement for getting, ticketing people, that then they have to pay DMV fines and get licenses and do all these type of things. So I feel like it's just a circulation of money that in the end doesn't come back and help the citizens in any way. The, again, with the equipment, the marine patrol equipment, that's what, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for equipment. There's more equipment on F, which is forty-nine thousand dollars for more law enforcement equipment, seventy thousand dollars for law enforcement purposes, with, there's no actual explanation or an actual, like, tally of everything, of where the money is going, of what it's being used for. And I feel like there just is a problem with this, especially when we have, you know, people, we're basically in the streets just asking for some sort of reform, for our leaders to sit down with us and actually listen to us and put that money into different issues and community, things going on, into community programs, into helping the actual community instead of using that money to allow people to then, you know, enforce in negative ways. You're locking people up, you're fining people, you know, you're doing all these, all these things except for actually looking at the people, listening to them, and just helping them. Where actually, we tell you countless times, time and time again, what we need, what we need from you as leaders, what we need from you as your fellow neighbors in this community, and for some reason it falls on deaf ears. And this just, I just hope that you vote no on these things, because this, it needs to stop. It needs all the extra spending for, with no actual cause and no actual reasons, and no actual, like, tally where we as citizens can look at what's, where our money's going, what it's being used for. It has, it just has to stop across the board, and I just hope it does. All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Aubrey Jones.
I'm so sorry.
Yes?
Madam Clerk, I just wanted to, for those that are listening, because I think that this agenda item, these agenda items can be a little confusing just in general, but these are all pass-through funds, so they have to go to the places they've been designated, otherwise we can't accept the money. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Jones, I have you signed up for eighteen B, C, D, and H. Sure, no problem. Eighteen B, C, D, and H.
D, C, D, and H. Good evening, people. Giving honor to God, I always wanted to say that, sorry. So on, you said B?
Yes.
So with B, thirty-six thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to FY twenty-twenty through twenty-one, police department operating budget to repurchase sanitizing equipment. I'd like to echo what Ms. Barbara has said so eloquently so many times, that there definitely needs to be more structure as far as putting together these meetings, because it's like finding Waldo to figure out what time it is, what does this mean, what does that mean, when can we speak, how do we sign up to speak? We're a little younger, we're a little more tech savvy, but the elders of the community need to be able to have easy access, showing news breaks or however, some type of alert system, even if it's just for the city of Virginia Beach, it has so much money, to be able to alert them of these meetings, because these are very important meetings. We're in the streets, but we're willing to show y'all we will come here as well. As far as that item, I have to say nay on it, because, again, echoing with Ms. Boone said, we've been, y'all brought an entire tank to a protest, y'all have plenty of money. We were hit with flashbangs, we were hit with tear gas, y'all got money. People, you know, Fourth of July, I don't know what y'all doing about these, when people paying the park, you know, Virginia Beach citizens are coming out of their pocket, people are getting towed, the taxes here are outrageous, people are already paying, so why do you need more money? Like, where is all this fine money going? So with that one, as far as purchasing hand sanitizer equipment, I'm just going to have to say a negative to that. Like I said, we don't, you know, really feel like we should be budgeting the police's PPE, that's what everybody else has to get. And the next item?
C.
C, okay, forty-eight thousand dollars, Department of Motor Vehicles, FY twenty through twenty-one, police department operating budget to authorize fifty percent in-kind match to re-overtime related to enforcement of DUI laws. Again, the police department is just pretty much showing that they're just trying to funnel more money and to bring in to just, you know, in your, you know, ad commercials, law and order, like, this is some law and order town, you come here, you know, there's a saying, it's kind of, we should be ashamed of the saying being so frequent here, but it's, come on vacation, leave on probation, come back on violation. And that's a stigma that people have, that you come to Virginia Beach, people that look like me, and we're always so concerned already about getting pulled over, God forbid, we have a decent car and have black skin, then, you know, we're even more of a threat. God forbid, we're driving down this very same street from a protest, and we get pulled over by all these officers, surrounded, give me a DUI check, I'm fully sober, and I get nothing, I don't get an ice cream, a pat on the back, or anything like that. I'm forced to believe that I was blessed to be able to leave that scene, and I had did absolutely nothing wrong. So, again, it's just going off everybody else, let's see how we can help people. If there's a high DUI rate, do we have alcoholic problems? Is more mental health programs needed, or more AAA programs needed to help people that may be fighting this? We're in the middle of a pandemic, people don't know what to do with themselves, you know, so they're turning to different alternatives, we've got cabin fever, there's a lot of different factors. And a lot of times, these crimes aren't crimes, it's cries for help, and throwing somebody in a cage to, you know, to assess that, to say, oh, you deserve this or whatever, instead of offering help, you know, it's really making it look like a big bad wolf type of situation. And, again, I have to say nay for that. We don't need overtime, y'all, we need to defund and give these resources to different mental health programs, we need to help our vets, we keep speaking and demonizing these tents, these are homeless people. People aren't just pitching a tent because, you know, they have a luxurious home to go to, these people are pitching these tents because they're homeless. So why isn't there anything about here about putting more money towards opening more shelters, giving these people more help? Why is help not up here? It's just, keep giving them money, and they'll keep bringing us people, that's kind of what it seems like, you got the bond system, you got to, you know, pay to get out and everything else, so, again, that's a nay.
Five D.
And D? Forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars from the Department of Motor Vehicles, DMV to FY twenty-twenty through twenty-one, police department operating budget and authorize fifty percent in-kind match to re-overtime related to enforcement of seatbelt laws. What, forty-eight thousand dollars to help? Seatbelt laws? Is this what, like, this is the main concerns of Virginia Beach right now, not the unarmed killers of numerous black males, including, you know, the sketchy stories of that, you know, not, none of that, we're worried about seatbelts? That's, you know, forty-eight thousand dollars, quote the great Allen Iverson, that's like practice. Forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars to, you know, Forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars to, you know, to reimburse overtime to enforce seatbelt laws. Why is this, like, why is this like Lily a thing, you know, this blows me monster mind? Um, so I, again, I just have to say no. And this, this money is just racking up, racking up, racking up to where we have all this money again for law enforcement. Where is the programs for the kids, the anti-bullying, the suicide prevention programs? Like, we know that Virginia Beach is a little more blessed in some of these areas and some places where they afford the different luxuries that people have worked for, it's not like it was given to them, people have worked to get these luxuries, but at the same time, like, is, some of this stuff just seems to be, you know, lack of better words, just petty, you know, forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars for some seatbelt laws to click at a ticket, it's really showing them. So, um, anymore? Was that it?
Yes, sir, H is your last item.
H, so again, that's a nay on D, I say no to D. So H is, uh, seventy thousand, good grief, man, y'all balling around here, let me hold something. Seventy thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars from the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant JAG to FY twenty-twenty, twenty-one Sheriff's Office, Police Department, Community Corrections, Pre-Child Services, Division Operating Budget, Re-And Law Enforcement Purposes. Again, spending more money locking people up. And, um, and I hate to even take it there, uh, but since this is actually on record, um, had the pleasure or non-pleasure of meeting an individual, and unfortunately right now his name slips me, but his wife was killed in the Virginia Beach mass shooting, and he had related to us that it was, he's a state employee, or, you know, she was a state employee, the benefits didn't pass down to him. They pretty much paid his co-pay and he pretty much had to come out of pocket for everything else. All this thirty million dollars raised for VB Strong, this man poured his heart out, again, his name slips me right now, but he poured his heart out. Why isn't there anything about here about making sure that these families of VB Strong or that tragedy that the city cares so much about is directly getting this money? Where is the system that's, as they're saying, that's showing the funneling down to these families of, I mean, if it is as need or of need basis, like making sure they have therapy, um, you know, discovering what happened to their family members, you know, that's, again, this comes back to help. We're, help, you know, doing everything with this money is, you just want to lock people up, that's what it looks like. You sit here, look at this budget plan, lock more people up, lock more people up, get more tickets, lock more people up. That's not a community, man, that's, that's a dictatorship. And if people are willing to come here, meet y'all at council and, and discuss this, um, you know, just know that, you know, so we need more, I think that people want more transparency. By transparency, they want an easy click, cut and go to be able to look at, if I want to look at, you know, where the law enforcement is spending money, if I want to look at the different housing, the thirty million people just came here and talking about the, uh, the overlays, um, you know, people, this, it, it needs more structure. Let's say y'all have tech guys, y'all have a budget out of this world, um, the citizens really would appreciate an easier way to find out about council meetings, um, and also we would like to have it, you know, multiple times a week. And we would also be able to like to talk to the law enforcement agency, um, because we're here discussing their budget, but there is nobody, you know, no police here outside of the ones back here that's protecting you all from whatever. But, um, we should, we need to be able to address the chief about, you know, exactly what's your plan for this, we need to be able to trust the assistant chief and the staff down the line, just like we were able to address you beautiful people today. Um, I'm gonna talk a little later, but that's another no for me. Y'all have a good day.
That's all the speakers.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, move approval, items eighteen A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have, uh, motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, Matt.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood. Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, we've approved items eighteen A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
All right, I think we're moving on to the planning items now, and would that be seven? Six. Six, seven, and eight, okay? Uh, the first one is Carol Davis, uh, for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at thirteen oh five Chickadee Lane, District Six, Beach.
Mayor, the, I just want to, um, Carol Davis, are you, they did not sign in or register to speak, is there Carol Davis or someone representing Carol Davis here?
So we have.
Two other speakers, Jay Boone. And after Ms. Boone will be Barbara Messner, and those are the only speakers we have signed up.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Boone, this is, uh, planning item number six.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, you guys skip around, I was so confused. Um, so is it six and seven?
Just six.
Just six? Okay. Um, this is, basically it just goes back to what I said about short-term rentals, I feel like as a citizen, I know you guys are saying now you don't have the right, but I feel like if you guys have been just giving them out since whenever and there's been times where we've asked for policy or when COVID happened for things to happen, like restrictions or any of that stuff, and nothing's happened, I feel like in a sense, like you kind of made it a person's right because all you did was basically say file your paperwork and you can get passed, so I just think you shouldn't stop it now just because you're deciding that by whatever standards Ms. Moss says, that it's not the person's right as a homeowner, but I feel like Carol Davis should have the right to rent out her property as she sees fit, so. Okay.
Barbara Messner.
Mr. Dyer, I want to make sure I have somebody walk me to the car tonight, it's getting pretty late. And that they keep the lights on at the far end. Okay. All of you have received correspondence from me on these short-term rentals, none of you have replied. And I appreciate the fact that, um, Black Lives Matter are coming here instead of protesting and re- actually reading some of these agendas. I may not agree with how they view things, and, like I said, I, I know how long y'all have been planning something in the water, uh, for two years before you even had it, College Beach Weekend, I don't believe in, um...
Ms. Messner, can you stick to the planning item, please?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, because I do want time for this. That, um... Okay, this isn't the exact picture, but the only reason I know about this is because, um, I, I read the agendas and there was, I drove by to see where it was exactly in the neighborhood, because we're pretty much landlocked, there's, the, the main lot, uh, traffic light is, you know, we have major traffic problems. But their sign said September ninth, anybody driving by? And, um, I called and spoke to somebody in planning and within fifteen minutes, uh, they moved the sign from the side of the building where nobody could see it and they put it out front, but it still said September ninth, that is not due process. And the applicant's not here and, um, they have been renting it already, and all of you should have the full information for Mr. Tahan. Like I said, there's a lot of traffic problems and, um, you put in a brewery next to us, there was a lot of opposition, and like I said, um, you know, this one at, at Croatan, you know, they hid it in the back, you couldn't see it. So the due process is missing and, you know, you shouldn't just be protecting certain neighborhoods, every neighborhood matters and we all deserve to have safe, safe neighborhoods without transient people coming and going, whether you're getting a piece of the action or not, you should be enforcing all the, uh, all the problems in our neighborhood. So I am opposed. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have no, nothing against this particular application, other than the fact it is not anywhere near the overlay area that we're having, and I, I know there is at least one other short-term rental not too far away, but I don't see any reason to approve further ones in this area where we're just had the same discussion we had. I appreciate all the people in Ocean Park coming out, but, um, I'll take Ms. Messner's word for it, that the neighborhood, um, is not crying out for more short-term rentals, and I'll move to deny the application.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to deny, any conversation? Okay, go to the vote, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Nay.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton? Vice Mayor Wood. Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to two, to two, this application has been denied.
All right, we're moving on to item number seven, uh, Ocean Rental Properties, Ray Conditional Use, Short-Term Rental at five sixteen Norfolk Avenue, units one, two, four, five, uh, Beach District. Mr. Tower? Oh, okay, oh, Mr. Burdon, I'm, my apologies.
Eddie Burdon.
Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Jones, excuse me, Vice, Vice Mayor Wood, I hadn't done that before, uh, and member of City Council. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, uh, appreciate the opportunity to come before you all and speak tonight. I've just provided, uh, the clerk with, um, a letter to, letter for each of you of support from Mr. Robert Perkins. Mr. Perkins came to the Planning Commission Public Hearing, uh, and expressed concerns about this application. He now is fully versed and aware of all the conditions and the, um, the fact that the property will be renovated, uh, and he'll have all these conditions that restrict these three one-bedroom, uh, units and one two-bedroom units in terms of the number of people, in terms of the, um, fact that they can't have more than two people in there after, I believe it's eleven PM, no music after ten, ten PM, et cetera, and fully supports the application. The, the, the part about this, I want to make sure everyone understands, is that, and, and the plan director did a great job at the Planning Commission with the, uh, the condition that was added, um, this is not a short-term rental now, um, and it will not be a short-term rental until we, um, proceed, which is, we're filing a street closure application for the unimproved portion of Norfolk Avenue that's in front of this property, that is used for parking, has been used for parking for quite some time, so that we can, um, clean it up, put three parking spaces in front, leave the parking spaces in the rear unchanged as they are today, um, they'll come in off the driveway and park and will not be in, in immediate proximity to the front of the house. The right-of-way directly to the west of Norfolk Avenue was closed previously, and it, I think it's an application that council will, um, uh, in, receive in the next probably three or four months, but the condition of this that's recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and staff also in support of the application just limits the ability to do it as a short-term rental until, uh, the parking is put in front rather than in the back. We have plenty of room to create more parking in the back, but it, it'll work better if it's, uh, it's in the, um, the front and we can create more than the required parking, um, on-site. So that's the, the interesting part about this, it's one that I, we haven't had before where we're saying, you know, we've got to close the unimproved, excuse me, the, yeah, unimproved portion of the street that's clearly excess and create, um, a plan that'll have the parking for three of the five required spaces, uh, in front of the, uh, the, the unit. All of the conditions that are standard conditions are acceptable to my client, they're a part of what was recommended, um, to you all, um, the, um, well, I'll let, Mr. Vane will be speaking and, and we certainly, um, support his, um, desire to see, uh, Ninth Street, which this property has no frontage on Ninth Street and will not create any parking issues on Ninth Street, but he has a concern about trying to get that under permit parking, which we, um, we told him, we totally support him in that effort. Hope you have to answer any questions, if you may have.
Any questions? Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jay Boone. And after Ms. Boone, Stanley Vane.
So Charlie Kim.
This is number seven.
Oh, number seven. Oh, yeah.
That's my property.
Okay. Basically, I just approve it, I think they should be able to do what they want to do. Am I doing eight, too?
You are, but that's not up yet.
Oy, okay. Um, yeah, I approve it, I should just go, I'm not gonna hold it any longer, it's kind of the same points, but, yeah, they should be able to have it, thank you.
The next speaker is Stanley Vane. And after Mr. Vane will be Barbara Messner.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor and Council. Um, I was opposed to this earlier, I just got done talking with Mr. Eddie. The problem that we're having on my neighborhood and in Shadow Lawn is the parking issues created by these Airbnbs. I own two properties right behind this, where this house is, and I live right across the street from Five. You walk out my front door, there's five Airbnbs, two illegal ones, catty-corner to me, that the city's doing nothing with, and we're having trouble with the parking. You're allowed to have so much parking per bedroom, and what they're doing is they're coming down on Ninth Street, which is a dead end, they're blocking the roads, they're blocking the access. I don't know how many times in the summer it was called with the police where the, the street was completely blocked off. I was opposed to this because of, hey, I wanted to live in the neighborhood, you know, and now it's a transient neighborhood, not knowing who it is. But after talking to Mr. Eddie, he was saying it's going to be properly managed. I'm not going to be looking, driving down Norfolk Avenue and seeing towels on the banisters. I'm not going to be driving down and having my front yard or the front yard there with the beach stuff and the trash. So they, they say they have professional management, but the Airbnbs in the Shadow Lawn area, the five hundred block, the four hundred block, they're destroying our neighborhood. Used to have a neighborhood, we have no neighborhood now, and then we have the parking problems, where people that are renting are parking off the street and you can't get through. So there's elderly people that live on that street. We have, uh, petitioned the city, the people that I've talked to that have the Airbnbs, they have petitioned the city for on-site residential parking, and if that was given to us on the five hundred block of Ninth Street, that would take care of this problem. Thank you.
Mr. Tower.
Mr. Tahan, it looks to me like, uh, Mr. Vane, there, there, uh, four approved, registered or approved across the street, so maybe, maybe four of those five may be authorized, is that possible, or?
Um, huh, there's two units that...
Sorry, will you step to the microphone, just a minute?
I don't know, like, five twelve is a one single-family home, the one next to it is two units, and then you have the two illegal ones, okay? You have an illegal one that's on four hundred block of Norfolk Avenue, which is supposed to be going to court, and then you have an illegal one that's catty-corner to me, we're waiting until the springtime, when they want to start putting their ad in the paper again or the Airbnb, to call whoever you need to call. I mean, right now, we've been fighting an illegal one for the last two months, and I was told that it was supposed to be in court. But the parking problem, I mean, you have residents that Airbnb on that street that are putting orange cones in front of their houses so they have parking places. The par- i- i- it's insane, the four hundred block, five hundred block. Is insane, and it's all Airbnb, and it used to be a wonderful neighborhood, I've been there since oh one. You know, it was a neighborhood and now it's a rental district, you know, with all these transient people coming, nothing... you know, with all these transient people coming. Nothing you can do. You know, when I talk to the people that own these Airbnbs, they tell me that, oh, it's a beach, it's a beach community, butch. Like, I'm supposed to accept the trash in the yards, the beach chairs in the yards, the towels that are on the daggone banisters in the front house. It wasn't like that when they turned around there and lived there. They've also, you've allowed people to take curbing away from the street, to expand driveways, which has eliminated legal parking. There's not enough room on my street for me to put the trashcans out without encroaching on my neighbors' aprons. But the Airbnb problem in Shadow Lawn is really getting out of hand, but this particular Airbnb that we're talking about is going to be properly managed, and after talking with Mr. Eddie, he, he told me that if there's a problem, I can call, and he, he straightened me out on some things. But the Airbnb in Shadow Lawn, the 400 block, 500 block, it's a mess, and it, and we've put in the parking permit. We've put in, we've talked, and we've already put in a application. I think the head of the Shadow Lawn Civic League has submitted an application to have residential parking only, and that will help take care of a big problem.
Mr. Vane, I just wanted to point out, what I think is true is that the vast majority of those Airbnbs that are legally operated are grandfathered. Those people applied before 2018.
Well, there, I think two of them are grandfathered. The one across the street from me, they, they is not.
Right, there's one that's been approved, right.
I don't know, but I mean, the city allows you to extend the curb, which took away from parking on the street.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm not referring to the curb.
And, and there, there is no way that I can even, I mean, if you can't get the trash...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening. It's really interesting that these people who want short-term rentals have their attorney speak for them. I was here, you know, when the Shadow Lawn people came and spoke and talked about the problems. One of the speakers was a city employee who couldn't sleep at night because of the, the loud music. You know, people work different shifts. We should have peaceful enjoyment all hours, not just certain hours. Talked about public engagement, and people can go to planning. You're passing it to planning. You appoint planning. Planning outsources some of their, their work, and the meetings are at 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM, including on the 14th. How many people with everything going on can attend a meeting at 9:00 AM and then again at 12:00 PM to speak out on these things? And as far as the explosion of short-term rentals, you gave at least $250,000 to Pharrell. He's subsidized with his singing, everything city and state. The schools, $350,000, and he uses some of that money to go on TV and tell people to get an Airbnb, to, you know, get in the business. He doesn't, he doesn't live here. He just comes here to make money. And you want to close all the roads at the oceanfront? We don't have parking. Yeah, I, I oppose these, and I think everything should be set back until you have funding and security to take care of these. I don't think you should be voting on any, and I don't think planning should be considering more. There are a lot on next week's agenda, and that wasn't properly advertised. Thank you.
Mr. Brandon, would you like to rebut?
Just a couple of quick comments. I know it's been a, a long, long evening. I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Perkins and his wife, also to Ms. Boone, and to Mr. Vane. This property is on Norfolk Avenue. If you could put the, the others, the closer shot in, there we go. It's Norfolk Avenue, the red star is where Mr. Perkins lives. Mr. Vane's doesn't, Mr. Vane doesn't live in, but he has a duplex on Ninth Street that's kind of catty-corner to the southeast. The two, the two buildings behind are not Mr. Vane's. He's not directly behind. There's no opposition from any of our immediate neighbors. And Mr. Vane, you know, we, we concur with him that it would be helpful to that neighborhood on Ninth Street, which is really a residential street rather than a major arterial collector street, to have the permit parking, but with the parking that we'll create on this piece of property, and at the same time, the closure, we will be adding property to the front of Mr. Perkins's unit, where he, too, can create more parking. He's not a short-term rental, isn't, isn't going to be a short-term rental, but the point is, we're going to do that to help create a better situation from a parking standpoint than exists today, and we will have a better situation with renovated units and professional management than just standard rentals in that building as it exists today, and all the conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable. My client would be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Eddie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm going to move for approval of this one. It is not in the proposed overlay district, but it's very close, and there are, and despite the laments from Mr. Vane, he, this area is, got dozens of short-term rentals around it, and you can say, well, one more is, breaks the back, but I can't make that judgment. I think this improves the parking situation. It improves the property, and it faces on Norfolk Avenue. It does not face on Ninth Street, so I'm, I'm going to move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to two, you've approved the application of ocean rental properties.
Planning had to make Charlie Kim raid conditional use permit, short-term rental, 809 Vanderbilt Avenue.
The applicant, Charlie Kim, is participating via WebEx. Mr. Kim, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments.
Thank you. My name is Charlie Kim, and thank you to the mayor and the member of the city council for reviewing and considering my application. My wife and I purchased the 809 Vanderbilt beach home in Croatan in late April, ultimately with the intention of family enjoyment with our four children and grandparents, until I am fully retired in just a few years. Our plan for this short-term rental is not, and let me repeat, not to build a lucrative business, but simply offset my expenses until I fully retire. We love Virginia Beach and its people. We also respect the laws and the government process that have been established by the council. However, I'm very tired of being accused of potentially not taking care of my rental property, and, and the type of clientele that would ruin the characteristics of the Croatan community, as many of you know, are anywhere between 800 to several hun, several million dollars, and at that price point in Croatan, you're not going to have college kids or party-goers who are able to really afford these homes. So, it is truly a, a, a beach community for families, and so that's what we love about this community. And we, we maintain great relationship with our neighbors. They've been great, and we're very sensitive to their concerns about, again, noise and other complaints that we've had. And, you know, we're not going to jeopardize our relationship with the city, with the Virginia Beach, and with our neighbors. We are very aware of the general opposition of these short-term rentals, but appreciate not being penalized for things that we have not done. If we do violate anything, then we should be made accountable. We follow the regulations, obey all instructions to get to this point, and this includes ensuring that we have ample parking space, and we made necessary adjustments in our application. And there's also something that I like to emphasize is, there's so much misinformation by personal views of, you know, trying to create limits and, you know, statements about values coming down. I've been to, I've been a landlord for about 20 years, and most of my renters have stayed in our place for five-plus years. I had one gentleman who stayed 10 years. And, you know, we, we are accountable for how we manage our properties, and it is our investment, and in this case, in, in Croatan, it is going to be my future home. So, prior to purchasing, we did ask our Realtor about the rental situation, and she did tell us that there is a process and we had to follow, and that's exactly what we did. So, in conclusion, we have been compliant with all the regulations that have been set forth. I respectfully request approval for my short-term rental application. If there are any chance of disapproval, why the council would disapprove, then I ask, you know, there, there have been many applicants that have broken these rules, have rented the place before approval, and in some cases, I think they've been approved. So, I ask for clear reasoning if there is any reason for disapproval. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Boone. And after Ms. Boone will be Barbara Messner.
I would just say, I guess, because obviously I agree with it, I feel like they should have it, but I feel like with citizens, I like saying no to it, sometimes I feel like we, we know that the area is good, we know the area wants to advance, we know that the area has lots to offer, and when there's things like the light rail put into place to help with transportation, to help spread out everything, that's kind of denied. And so, the alternative then is when Airbnbs then are brought into the area, people want to rent out their homes, now those people have to drive to their homes, you know, that they're renting, and now there's less parking, there's less, less accessibility. And I know I've been in a situation as well, where I've been at a property and I couldn't park my car, or I didn't have any space, or any of those things, and it is frustrating, but it is when, when, when we have times where we have things that can be voted on to pass that could help alleviate the situation, or at least be proactive to problems that are going to occur, because we know that we're a tourist area. We know that you guys want to make as much money off of the oceanfront and the shoreline as possible. But there has to be a give and take on that, and I feel like it's not, you know, lost on me that now, even though that the, like, light rail and things like that have been denied, now the issue is like still, like, the other people or the transients coming into the area this way, you know? Eventually, no matter what, the area's going to progress, the area's going to get better, or it's just going to stay the same, whatever. I mean, that's the good thing about having a military town, is that we don't have to really worry too much about the fluct, the fluctuation of, like, income and, and all that sort of stuff, like, a lot of other areas, like, just over the state line. North Carolina has to worry a lot more than we do. But I just think that, again, residents should have some sort of rights and some sort of leadway to kind of make up for, you know, the losses that they have with the pandemic, with everything going on, and balance out everything themselves. And I just say to citizens, like, if you don't like the outcome of things, vote, and if you do like the outcome, vote. Whatever the case, just vote. Thanks.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner is Jim Skarback.
This one's been, good evening. This one's been deferred from September 15th, because it was being rented, and, you know, I just, I have friends that live in Croatan, and I've checked on three of the ones that are, there's one at 60557, and this one that I happened to see. And these are investment properties. They had a spokesperson before, and they have people who manage it for them. This is a big business. People hire people to do dog sitting, babysitting. It's commercial and residential neighborhoods, and I hope people will notice that eight-two vote. Anyway, and that they will look at the, yeah, there is no enforcement. Traffic is terrible. You did deny one because of, you got calls from certain people. I assume you didn't get that many calls, because a lot of people do not know about these meetings. I'm glad people are waking up to the fact, and that gentleman that you voted against that lives in Shadow Lawn, he showed me the application, which I had already seen. October 5th, it was sent out, and it, you know, he, he just got it. That's not due notice to get in touch with anybody, as if y'all answer people who oppose you anyway. So, I'm in opposition. I've stayed here. It's going on 11 o'clock at night, and I give a damn about my city. There's too much crime, there's too much traffic, and we don't need people having event houses that can't be controlled and partying in their residential neighborhoods. It's unsafe for our children, and you're all liable. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Skarback. And then after Mr. Skarback will be Conrad Agresti.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, member of city council. My name's Jim Skarback. I live at 808 Surfside Avenue, the property behind the property in question. I've lived there since 1996, watched the property in question be built, and now the third owner of the property, new owner, is trying to get a conditional use permit for short-term rental, is asking for a right that doesn't necessarily exist. The city, the Planning Commission's write-up of the, the property mentions that the neighborhood is full of single-family homes. That's true, but the single-family homes you picture when you hear that tend to be one- to two-story properties on, you know, acre lots. We have three-story, 3,500 square-foot houses sitting on 5,000 square-foot lots. We've got nine times the density of the kind of neighborhood you're thinking of. Our houses are 10 to 20 feet apart on the side, and 40 to 50 feet apart in the back. Our neighbors' outdoor activities are closer to our house than most people's own outdoor activities are to their own houses. With such a situation, the effects of short-term rentals, the negative effects are greatly increased on the neighbors. In fact, the violations of the, of what would normally be your short-term rental ordinances that happen for, in the neighborhood are pretty obvious. If you look on vacation rentals by owners, you'll see there's a four-bedroom, 3,000-square-foot property on South Atlantic, advertises sleeping 12. A five-bedroom, 3,650 square-foot property on Surfside, just down the street from my house, advertises sleeping 14. A seven-bedroom, 333,300 square-foot property on South Atlantic, advertises sleeping 19. A 10-bedroom, 6,500 square-foot, this is one of the bigger oceanfront lots, property on South Atlantic, advertises sleeping 28. All these properties lack on-street parking. They all have the same 50-foot footage front that we do on the, on the roads. We get increased huge parking issues, the trash issues, the, the noise issues. These are properties that end up being a constant party. It's, it's party city, it's vacation all summer long. You know, you get nothing but disturbance. I've got a neighbor down the street who describes it as living next to Motel 6 for 15 years. I've got another neighbor who just sent a letter in with me tonight on the same thing, who wanted to speak, but is, was too afraid that, she's got one of these right behind her, that she would just get up here and cry. You know, my, both my kids' bedrooms are in the back facing that house. You know, I would like them to grow up in peace in the neighborhood and continue to grow up. I mean, I don't want to be up here either being forced to move, or... or, or just cry myself because of the effects of having, you know, a short-term rental behind us. Please do not grant this property that right, deny the application. Do you all have any questions for me?
Sir, we, we heard an allegation from a previous speaker. Since you live there, is it currently being leased, leased out?
The, the 809? I don't think they rented it to anybody. In fact, the, the people that owned it just before went through a divorce for about a year, and the previous owner more or less stopped doing some of the maintenance on it because I don't, I think he was worried his wife was going to get it. So why should he fix it if she was going to get it? So they've actually, I think, been fixing, doing some good job fixing the place up. I don't thi- I don't think they've had any, any actual renters in there. I think it's just, you know, but it's not their primary residence, so they're not always down there, I don't believe. Welcome.
The next speaker is Conrad Agresti.
Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Feel like the kid who's asking for homework before summer vacation. I'm also rising to speak against this at the request of some of my fellow neighbors in the Croatan neighborhood. The density of short-term rentals in the neighborhood is, is, is much of the concern. The picture we have here, and this picture, if I'm not mistaken, is taken from page 499 of the 538-page agenda, which I'll have to agree with, Ms. Messner didn't show up until, until Sunday morning. But, or Monday morning, excuse me. But this is not the same as the, actually, this is not from page 499. It's from page 511. The one on page 499 is a little bit different. But there's two large party houses in Croatan that do not appear on here. Take this down, Bobby. 631 Vanderbilt Avenue and 301 Croatan Road. They've been rented out for years. They're not listed on here as being registered. I've heard people talk about the, to generate revenue. Go get it. Heard a lot of good stuff here tonight. I thank you all for your time in listening to the short-term rental issue, which is such a quandary. One thing I would like to, to say is, and I, a lot of times, there are many of us who do want to get involved, and we just don't have the information in time. Or something is happening in the planning commission or some other commission, or some smoky back room that we just don't get the skinny on it until it's too late. Okay, even those of us who are retired have schedules that we have to meet, doctor's appointments, other things. So getting the information out, getting that community involvement, as you've heard tonight, is really important. Thank you for listening to Citizens this evening, and have a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers. Mr. Kim would like to, would, if he would like to rebut, he would have three minutes to do that.
Yeah, I think in, as a courtesy, we should.
Mr. Kim, if you have any additional comments, we will unmute you and just pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. So, you know, with Barbara, I, I, I just totally lost all respect, you know, with accusing me of renting the place because all we had, as I said before, is, you know, we love this property. All we had was family members. And for her to accuse us of renting the place without prior approval, it, it just boggles my mind. And she complained about somebody who didn't live in Virginia Beach. And I would say the same thing. She does not live in Croatan, and what gives her the right to make all these claims? And so again, you know, to the council, all I think I ask is, is fairness in your decision and consistency. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tower?
I understand Mr. Kim's desire for fairness and consistency. It seems reasonable. But there comes a time when we say enough is enough. My, I have been convinced by the witnesses tonight and the correspondence I've received that this is, enough is enough for Croatan at this point, and I'm going to move for denial. For denial.
Okay, we have a motion to deny and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, this application has been denied.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, appointments?
Mr. Mayor, make the following nominations. Got some feedback here. To the Bayfront Advisory Commission, Captain Michael Witherspoon, ex-officio, CEO of JEB Little Creek Ford Story. To the Board of Building Code Appeals, Thomas Sherwin, electrical contractor. To the Chesapeake Bay Alcohol Safety Action Program, Chief Paul Nudigay. To the Clean Community Commission, Sandra Shina Burger. To the Community Policy and Management Team, Deirdrea Bolden. To the Community Services Board, Kay Ashby, Diane Jones. To the Green Ribbon Committee, Claudia Cotton, Roy Flanagan, Chris Freeman, Laura Hubber, Al Henley, Emily Steinheber. To the Health Services Advisory Board, Justine Reyes-Ford. To the Housing Advisory Board, Don Weeks. To the Human Rights Commission, Morgan Ellis, Hannah McCall, Mancall. To the Minority Business Council, Damon Watson and Jakita Thompson. To the Ocean and Land Use Conformity Committee, Lisa Murphy. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jackson Tower. To the Public Library Board, Corinne Medina. To the Resort Advisory Commission, C.E. Doug Douglas. And to the Wetlands Board, Sun Temple Holgren. So move, or just nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Wood? Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have appointed this nominated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? We're going to adjourn into, you know, the public comment, but if it's okay, we're going to take a short break.